Officially called to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one here in Palm Desert. Why don't we stand for the, do the pledge allegiance and then we'll get into the other stuff. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under governor's executive orders. In response to the COVID-nineteen state of emergency, the agenda states that the public may view this meeting online as there will be no public location for attending in person. This meeting has been livestreamed online at the district's website. As stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda were given the opportunity to submit comments by emailing the district. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record and what do we?
Yes, good morning, Mr. President. Uh, we did not receive any general comment for this morning, but we did receive a letter late last night in regards to item nine C, which um has been made available to the board and will be made available to the public upon completion of the meeting. And if I may add, um, you do notice that we have some extra members in our boardroom today. This is the first group, um, AV vendor that we have who is doing the live demonstration of the board meeting today, so it is also being streamed on our YouTube website.
Thank you. I know we should probably roll call first, but we, we do have one member of the board attending remotely and possibly some others, uh, I don't know. So I'll make sure to call on um Director Nelson specifically to make sure that he is included in all the discussion and question areas and all motion, all um, all action will be done by roll call vote. A roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Thanks.
He's here. Director Bianco.
Here.
Thank you. Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Good, good, good. Do we have any adjustments, deletions or additions to today's agenda?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
Nor I. Public comment, we've already covered. And assuming we don't have anyone present that wishes to comment, no.
Do I see any hands from staff? Did you want to make a comment? Or on the phone as well?
Yeah, no, so there's no, no, no public comment. And then consent calendar, we have items six A through E on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar and a roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson. Director Nelson. You are muted.
I can tell it's getting hot in that AV room.
Uh, we can.
Hey, I left activity for a minute, sorry.
We were just asking for your vote on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I, I, yay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passes five zero. Yay. Written communications, what was that? Did we have written communications? No, no.
Well, the one letter from last night.
We had the letter, right, the letter we already discussed. Should go over here because it's more up to date. Um, it looks like, yeah, yeah, so nine A, we're on to action items. And it's only eight oh six AM, well done.
I'm sure we'll get Bob down at some point, sir.
Hi, Dan, go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, board members. So I'm here today to present a request for the General Manager, text acute task order number twenty-five with Woodard and Curran, the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty dollars to prepare a cost of service study for our domestic water uh connection fees, sanitation connection fees and our water system backup facility charge, uh along with project management and contingency. Total cost of this request is one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. So the reason for bringing this to the board is, last time we updated our study was back in two thousand twelve. Um, in two thousand eighteen, an updated study was brought to the board and that study and that cost of service was not approved. So we uh, our intent here is not only to update the costs that go into these charges, but also to give us and the board added flexibility when we implement some of these fees. So for example, um, as we do these consolidation projects, right now we charge certain fees, including the water system backup facility charge, which goes towards purchasing imported water supplies. And there's been a desire by the board to look at ways of perhaps waiving those charges or extending payment or things of that nature. And so what we'd like to do is not only update the study, but also do provide not only the board, but with staff, added flexibility in how some of these fees are implemented.
Did, or Dan, did you mean to refer to the supplemental water supply charge when you were discussing that?
Yes.
I think you mentioned the other one, the backup facilities charge.
Sure, just to clarify, so there's three fees out that we're looking at, the water system backup facility charge, supplemental water supply charge and sanitation capacity charge. Yeah, sorry if I confused that. So we went out uh to request proposals from the consulting community back at the end of last year. Uh, proposals were due in January and we didn't receive any response from the consulting community. So I looked to see who downloaded the proposal or the RFP originally and did outreach with our on-call consultants. And in, in talking to the on-call consultants, um, I learned that this is a very um specific type of work that's being requested and very few firms can do this work. So not only did we do outreach, but we conducted a pre-proposal meeting and along with issuance of a simpler RFP. And back in March, we received one proposal and that was from Woodard and Curran. And in reviewing that proposal, um, their, their cost was reasonable for the effort. Uh, they've also will be providing us with an interactive financial tool that we can use to model various scenarios. And part of this work scope is also to conduct outreach with the TVBA and as well as provide any options or recommendations for phasing, any proposed uh changes in the fee uh for the board's review and ultimately approval. This project is budgeted this fiscal year and is budgeted next fiscal year. So costs are covered with that and so with that, I'm, I would welcome any questions?
Yeah, thanks, you know, and just, I have a few. First of all, I'm glad to see we're doing this and I'm glad to see that we have somebody that's willing to do the work. So that's a plus. I had kind of three different things that um, first of all, there's this premise and I'm not saying I disagree with it, but I'm just wondering, is this a policy decision or is it state law or what is it? When we say that growth pays for growth, is that a decision we made or is that something that's required under two eighteen or how does that work?
Um, it's, I'm not sure if it's a law, but the, the premise is if a new development comes on board that our existing customers aren't paying to construct reservoir storage, for example, for that project.
And if I may, uh, there actually is a separate section of the government code that talks about capacity and connection fees like this, and it has a very similar standard to two eighteen, although it's not a two eighteen event. It talks about the reasonable cost of the service provided, what is the burden of the new development? And making sure that burden is paid by the developer and not existing.
All right, I mean, and I'm trying to get to the root of that because it seems to conflict with another policy, state policy, that's sort of the human right to water. And it also seems to conflict with this idea that we may be looking to um provide relief to disadvantaged communities. So I'm just trying to understand what's the origin or what's the nature of that premise that growth pays for growth? You know?
That is indeed the conflict that I, I think the state's trying to address recently, but that is still the law and still what we need to address in this type of study.
Okay, and then along those lines, um, there, there's discussion about providing some relief to disadvantaged communities and my question is, do we have a, for this purpose, do we have a definition of disadvantaged communities?
Yes, there, there's a definition of that, uh, it's uh eighty percent or less of the median household income defines disadvantaged.
Eight percent, eight, eighty percent or less?
Eighty percent, yes.
Eighty percent or less of median household income? Is that statewide median?
Uh, statewide median, yes.
It's like thirty-six thousand per year or something like that.
Yeah, so, I mean, and then, I'm just trying to see how this works. How big a community does it need to be to be a disadvantaged community? Can it be one, one household, two households, how, how, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I can see people trying to have small projects where you have maybe three households and call themselves a disadvantaged community in order to uh get the benefits of this. So how big does it need to be?
Uh, so typically we look at, at what's called state wall uh, uh, small water systems. It's defined by the state and I believe that's uh ten connections or more. And so for Palanca Parks, for example, Riverside County Environmental Health will regulate them. And so for, for less than that, um, there's different regulations for a private homeowner, for example, is unregulated by county environmental health that, that I'm aware of. So it's really state small water systems that we're looking at. And so for example, if you have a, a mobile home park, they drilled a well fifty years ago or forty years ago, um, should, and they've been using groundwater, should we be charging you supplemental water supply charge, which goes to bring in imported water to offset that demand? And so that's what we're really trying to look at and see if there's a, there's a way to perhaps um add flexibility with how that fee is implemented.
Right, yeah, and, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm just trying to understand the conflict with the growth pays for growth thing and then, you know, if we're going to carve out a, a, a type of entity for these fees, we need to be really clear who, who that is. And sure, because people are going to try to game the system, obviously. I mean, if you have some way to avoid paying fees, you know, next thing you know, you're going to have all kinds of people that qualify for it that today would never qualify for it, but they're going to figure out a way to do that, right?
And, and that's a really important point, and so this study is really intended to help define those parameters.
Right.
And so we'll, we'll look at all of those and have different options that we'll present. That way, you know, we as staff want to make sure that it's applied fairly and that no one can game the system.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. So, and then my third, my final part is, there's discussion about um waiving, reducing or extending payment for the supplemental water supply charge. And I know we've talked about this in a variety of scenarios, uh, but it says for disadvantaged communities and for projects already using groundwater. And I would suggest we change those words. Instead of saying projects, I would say properties. And instead of saying groundwater, I would say using water. And, and the reason for that is, you know, you potentially have, and I've heard the folk, one or two people complaining that, you know, if they have a farm that's using six acre feet per acre or eight acre feet per acre, and they propose to put in a housing development that uses two acre feet per acre, they're actually reducing their demand on the water system. I know it's a different type of water, but they're reducing their demand on that water system and yet they're being required to pay a supplemental water supply charge, which may not make sense if you're, if you're actually helping, you know, create, you're creating a, a supply of water by reducing your demand. So I don't know if groundwater really makes sense or it should be any water. And instead of projects, I would say properties because I think we look at, at least I look at it that way.
Okay. If I, are you going to answer or?
I was going to say the, the, those are good points, uh, and you know, it, it also, uh, when you look at the use of non-potable water that comes into play as well, for example.
Okay, so along the same lines, I, I think that what I recall is we were having this conversation about perhaps not assessing the supplemental water supply charge to properties that were already making use of groundwater. It, I don't recall that it had anything to do with disadvantaged communities. So I think along the same lines as President Powell, I don't understand the distinction between, or whether we have to make a distinction between disadvantaged communities or any sort of type of, you know, waiver because of economic status when it, when it comes to this, right? Um, so I think what we're saying fundamentally is you're using water already, so why would we, you know, you're pumping groundwater, you're coming in to connect to the system that's pumping groundwater. What, what, you, you're not putting any stress on the aquifer. So, so in my mind, it has nothing to do with disadvantaged communities. You, you, you either fit in that scenario where you're pumping groundwater, then you don't pump, but you're pumping groundwater because you're connected to the system.
Sure.
So I don't, I don't really, I guess I'm missing the, the point of this, that, you know, that somehow we're notching something out.
Why are they separated?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see it, right? So, 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 but it, it creates this premise that, or this idea that somehow we're helping out somebody because they're a specific, you know, they're a disadvantaged community when that's not the case. To me, it's because you're making use of water already.
And, and I think, um, and that's a good comment, I think the conversation started with disadvantaged communities and we can certainly just expand that.
Yeah, it did, I think it did, but, but it's not, I mean, I think it's, it's overall, right? It's, it's overall.
Yeah, and then, and then I think, you know, that it's kind of similar to our discussion of, of supplying Colorado River water outside of ID one. Well, as soon as we have that policy, people are going to try to game, you know, it's just, just the way it is. I mean, if you create a, a, a waiver of a fee, that's an incentive for people to figure out a way to get that waiver, right? And so for this one, we need to look and be careful and make sure that they can't just put one order of water in and all of a sudden waive all their fees. It, it has to be some sort of real, you know what I mean? It's measured either by volume of water or time or both, or something that makes it look legitimate, uh, instead of just someone trying to game the system.
And, and I think that we start with the premise that the law requires for the growth to pay for growth, the burden on this system is paid by the new development that brings in the burden of the system. And then having a study that comes up with a policy like where instead of paying the fee, if you've already brought water or you have groundwater, or you're going to pay for the reservoir, things that we already do that in some cases reduce their, or take away the need for the fee because they're providing that whatever is needed for that burden on their own. So that's all we're talking about, we're not talking about setting up a waiver system or discount. We're saying we need fees that go to the burden of new development. And then if that development's bringing something to the table, a grant, a reservoir, groundwater, then those things will be taken into account.
Yeah, well, but, but let me, let me finish my thoughts here.
Good, good.
And then, and I'll just say this and then I'll let whoever else wants to make comment, but I, I, and I know we're just throwing things out there right now, President Powell. Um, maybe things that we want to focus on, but I, 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 for whatever reason, I haven't really, you know, put all my thoughts together, but, but the idea that, that somehow we, and again, I know we're going to look at it and we'll make sure that it makes sense and then we'll make a policy decision as a board, but, but the idea of tying, you know, water, surface water to the land as you're going from, you know, farm to houses and what role that plays, I, to me, that seems like that would open a bigger can of worms than, than I think when we first started this conversation of, as you mentioned, you know, kind of doing it with the, with the thinking that as we're chasing grants to try to do these consolidation projects that are for communities that are existing, these are existing homes, these are existing communities. And that somehow we're just trying to alleviate some sort of cost because it's dependent on grants. It's not being carried by anything but grants. But then opening that up to now perhaps waive these fees on, on something that's a brand new project, it, it to me just seems like it's, it's a whole different thing, you know? And so that for me is probably the one thing that is a lot more sensitive. Because it, it, in my mind, just kind of hearing it out right now, it's, that opens up a, a bigger can of worms.
And, and, and so I think um, the term wave is probably creating a lot of concern here and is um, Jeff said, it's probably a better term is offset. Again, if, if they have something already that they're using or doing like a, like a well or potentially surface water, probably the term offset is a better term to use. So, so in other words, I don't want it, I don't want to give the impression that we're just going to waive fees just without anything in return.
Yeah, but then again, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, pretty fast here, as fast as I can think to try to make sense of this, but, but I guess it's uh, you know, on the supplemental water supply charge, it is, it is tied to the property, you know, whether that prop, so you, you're already making, you, you're not putting a new demand. So I could see where it makes sense also, you know, when, if you're, if you're having a farm and then you put houses and you're actually reducing the amount of water that you need per acre. I can see how you, at that point, if, if the idea is that you're requi, you're required to go buy more water because this new use is putting a bigger water demand in the area and now you have to go buy more water, then I could see how it makes sense that.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're actually reducing the demand that, why would it make sense that now you got to go buy more water? So, so I could, I could see that, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it to, to discourage it, I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of thinking out loud too.
So I, I want to make sure that, what is the intent of this? Is the intent to make it harder for developers or to make it easier for developers? Because, you know, we got to remember, you know, the desert wasn't built the way that you're, 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 you're talking about, Jeff. And, you know, I, I don't want to get in a corner, back ourselves in a corner like uh some of the power companies are now to where we can't get power because nobody can develop, no one can put in a huge substation on their own and put a, and, and I'm afraid that we're, I don't know what the intent is here to make development pay every last penny of every single thing? Or, I mean, what are we trying to accomplish? Because that, that will stifle growth, I mean, growth in the desert was not done like that.
Sure, um, and so really all.
Let me, um, Director Bianco, I don't think it's either one of those. It's not to make it harder, it's not to make it easier. It's to pass on the costs that we believe development needs to pay for in order to join a system that's already existing, that we cannot pay for under existing law.
So I believe that we already have that here. And so you, you, I, I don't know if you're trying to tighten the screws more or uh make sure that there, there, maybe there's some, some pathways to, to make it a, a little bit easier. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I, I'll just say that for me, it looks like it makes it easier and not easier, but it's a, it's a, it's, it's something that folks could work with a bit more, um, because it is, I think, allowing the criteria to be in such a way where you might fall into a category or a criteria where you're no longer required to pay, let's say, the supplemental water supply charge because your project or that existing use on that land has a rate, already has a, a demand on the aquifer or, or, or Colorado River water, whatever the case is. So for me, I, I, I believe that and I understand what you're saying because I, I also have had trouble with, with the fact that we have no infrastructure in the east side and it's because we've, we've kind of depended on developers and development to extend service. And so I think that's why we've been focused on grants for such a long time. But I think that, and I, I don't know too much about the IID, but I don't know how they charge capacity fees. But in my conversations that I've had with them, I haven't gotten a clear answer as to whether they charge capacity fees as they, as they, you know, bring on new customers or whether they, they just don't charge capacity fees and that's why they, they expect developers to put in one hundred percent of the infrastructure that's required for growth. But if, if in fact they don't charge capacity fees, you know, the difference here is that we do charge capacity fees and we have a fund to help with some of that growth and, and, and I, so we do have a source of funding. I mean, I think just recently we had about twenty million dollars and we used ten of that somewhere and we're going to hopefully use ten of that somewhere else. But I feel like we do have a, a method of, of collecting capacity fees so that we can help with that growth wherever it's needed. So I, I don't know that IID has that in place, I have, I've asked that question, but I haven't gotten an answer.
Well, I can help there because we're only talking about domestic and sanitation here and IID doesn't provide either of those services. We do not have capacity fees on the canal system. Um, I do, I am aware that there is a similar um prohibition on the electrical service side. They are also restrained from providing, as Director Bianco brought up, uh, substations, transmission lines to feed new development. So in that, from that regard, they are similarly constrained as we are, um, that we can't use current rate payer money to extend an existing system to new customers. But as far as capacity fees for domestic and sanitation, it just doesn't apply at IID. I can't speak to their canal system, but we don't have capacity fees on our canal system.
Sure. I just want to make sure, Dan, that you give the, the uh consultant's direction to, to, to one direction to study.
Yeah, is, are the consultants present, the, this Woodard and Curran?
I, no, they're.
No, but we have quite a history with them, they're very active in the east valley already.
Well, I understand, but I, maybe they should make sure that they have a chance to listen and I know we need to get Director Nelson on board too, but they need to listen to this conversation. Instead of, instead of, you know, you trying to tell them what we said, just have them listen to it.
Sure, and, and I, I should also add that um, another component of this project is also to do outreach uh with the DVBA as well as the board. And so in the proposal, uh, we have um six presentations, for example. And so we've envisioned that we would bring some initial alternatives or thoughts to the board and get feedback. That way, at least as we move uh through the study, we have board support and DVBA, or at least we know your concerns and we can address those. So this uh is going to be very much interactive and collaborative because we don't want to do this and get, say, to November and have the board not disagree with what we've done.
I, I just don't want the consultants to put all, a whole bunch of stuff on paper, okay? Before knowing the direction that we're, and then back us into a corner when all this stuff's on paper saying you have to do this. So.
We are extremely sensitive to that, you know, we've all been involved in the cost of service study that's been ongoing right now and so that's been very helpful. And so we've structured this uh project uh based on what we've learned and, you know, we understand the board's comments.
The, Dan, so I, I think, I think we, we probably spent most of the time here talking about the supplemental water supply charge, but you, you kind of mentioned that this study as a whole is really looking at these three different components, right?
Yes.
The water um system, backup facilities charge and the sanitation capacity charge. Um, so I, I think we kind of baited the supplemental water supply charge enough.
Yeah.
Um, but as it relates to the water system backup facilities charge, this is, this is what, can you explain a little bit of um, at least maybe for all of us so we get a sense of what the direction is to the consultant? Because I imagine you already have some thoughts in mind that you're going to, you know, try to set a foundation as to, this is what we're trying to achieve, is, is the idea here. And I, and I'm saying this because I think we've, we've had this conversation in the past, probably for several times. And it probably applies to both the sanitation charge and the backup facilities charge. And that's, and that has to do with, with the idea that um, the conservation perhaps has, has put a, a, a less of a demand on, on. the conservation perhaps has has put a a less of a demand on 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 usage. And so maybe we're perhaps sizing things um um, you know, to a size that we might not need to size things. And then does that also carry over to the sanitation portion of that? Um what what's the what's the, I think we know the we we talked enough about the premise, the idea of the supplemental water supply charge, but what's the what's the idea on the other two?
Sure, so uh as I've said before, last time we updated, this was uh almost nine years ago. And so what we've done recently is we've completed a uh water demand study for new developments that we spent two years looking at. So we're gonna incorporate that water demand data as part of the study. And and what we've seen is uh water demand has certainly gone down since the last time we did this study. I kind of looked back up due to COVID and people working from home. But overall, demand has decreased since we last uh looked at that. So we we envision plugging in those new updated demands, which are slightly lower in into this and also looking at different alternatives for calculating these charges for both of them. Uh and and there and there's different methods that you can use. And so we'll we'll look at that, look at current costs to construct infrastructure. And so update everything, have at least three alternatives, look at options for phasing in these fees based on all all the concerns that we're certainly aware of. And then bring those to the board with, you know, what we believe is is direction that we should go in.
Although you'll see.
Yeah, I want to give Director Nelson a chance to to speak also, just to.
Thanks, John, obviously, which is an impassioned issue, which is how to get a word in edgewise between all the directors, everyone, first of all. Which is good, I'm everyone's engaged, that's good. As far as supplemental charges, uh listen, if if well, if someone's on groundwater and they're on canal water and they have the cycle water, I mean, there's no reason for uh for certain situations to have to pay that supplemental charge. If if it's a vacant land that has no access to water and goes beyond the groundwater management plan, uh then of course they should pay a supplemental imported water supply charge. And and on the backup system fees, I mean, those are real, real costs. And so uh whether they're paid by developers or by grants uh or uh and we incorporate um um, you know, the the lower water usage uh means conserve times and the different um ordinances we now have as far as water use, that should all be incorporated. And the best thing I heard out of the presentation, uh you know, that probably didn't come across in the in the in the board packet was that the uh the staff and the uh contractor will be working in a collaborative effort uh with the board as the process goes along. So before anything's presented and put down on paper that, you know, we hash out these policy issues to to make sure they're into everyone's satisfaction. So uh I'm 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 in favor of the proposal uh with regard to the discussion we did there.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments or questions, really. Um so in this in the staff report, in the in the PowerPoint, there's a bullet point, Dan, that talks about uh an update that was prepared by Stan Tech in two thousand eighteen that um that that was designed, I think, to get us to a similar place. It was not approved by the board based on this A W W M one manual. So can you explain that and why that doesn't apply now?
Sure, I'll I'll give you my sense of that. This project was um run through our finance department, so I don't, I'm not familiar.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry.
Sure, um this project was uh run through our finance department, so I'm familiar with the general details of it.
Mm hmm.
But in essence, uh what what I recall was that the methodology and the changes in the fees were not palatable to the board. And I think, you know, what we're proposing here is something, as uh Director Nelson said, that we're gonna collaborate upfront with the board and D V B A to make sure that any questions that you have or concerns are addressed upfront, rather than, I think what happened with that study is when it was presented in its form, that uh the board had a lot of concerns with that and thus it was not it was not approved.
So that was uh one A, then one B is the um we recently had a a discussion and presentation on on developer impact fees and connection fees. We had a letter from D V B A on on that set of fees. So what why was this not all incorporated as one study? Why why are these two different studies?
So uh in historical engineering has taken the lead on the connection fees because they're really related to capital costs.
Mm hmm.
And it was thought it was better to unbundle that from the cost of service study because that really was more focused on on our rates. And the amount of effort uh to combine both uh would have been just just, I think, too much, in fact. Um in fact, when I spoke with uh some of the consultants, including Corolo, who, as you know, is doing our current study, um they, with their limited staff resources and commitments, they couldn't even do this. And so it would have been uh just a tremendous burden on any consultant, I think, at that time. And so we've always done this as a separate study and it seems to work better. Uh we can focus on this and um really take it separately from the rates that you're currently looking at.
Okay, and then my last question is, um so these are existing charges that we have?
These are existing charges, correct.
Okay, and so do we have a sense of how our existing charges compare to other similar agencies who have the same charges?
I I am not familiar right now, um part of this study. The D V B A just published their, Jim's gonna get a copy.
I have a copy, sir, I'll get it to the board.
You just got it, it's brand new and they go to.
Latest one, okay, guys.
There's a new one that that we just talked about it two days ago, three days ago, four days ago, whatever. And Gretchen's gonna send it to you right now, but it it does exactly that. It compares the different fees for all of the jurisdictions in the valley.
Excellent.
Yeah, and it's it's worth a look, they do a good job.
Yeah, I look forward to it, that's that's important, alright.
And we've also added in as a task here, so whatever we propose or whatever alternatives we propose, again, you'll have a frame of reference.
Great, I appreciate that. Mr. President, I would um I'll move the item for approval.
Second.
Uh great, we have a motion in a second. Appreciate it, Dan, good presentation, I mean, I we're gonna wait for Sylvia to come in. But um it's probably more sort of social engineering than I've seen and and something that we've done, you know? I mean, I know we go out and do grants and stuff like that and it's it's great. But this, I mean, it 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 struck me as different because it never mentioned grants or public money or anything like that. It's talking about charging different fees depending on your economic status. I mean, that's that's the way I read it, I think that's what it says. And I was a little surprised by that because I'm not even sure you can legally do that. But I but at the same time, I'm not entirely opposed to it, you know? Anyways, it's it's definitely the type of thing that's gonna require a lot of collaboration and iteration because it's a completely different tack than than what I've seen before.
Yeah, and I'm I'm looking forward to it as well. And and uh and as, you know, Dan mentioned, it perhaps started at least for one of the components or maybe all three components um as a conversation as we were trying to deal with maybe these lower income situations, so.
Right, which we're already using groundwater.
Yeah, so I'm 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 looking forward to it, I know that there's gonna be a lot of a lot of involvement and I'm looking forward to working with all of you on this.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. We're good and we're ready to do a roll call, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, go ahead.
President Powell.
Hi.
Vice President Strata.
Hi.
Director Bianco.
Hi.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed by though.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Next, nine B. Oh, Paris Dam, hmm. Robert Chang, good morning.
Morning, President Powell, members of the board. So I have a brief presentation for you uh in addition to the uh materials in the board packet. Uh so I'll try to run through it fairly quickly in the interest of time. Um this has been a project in making for, you know, at least the last five years. So I'll give you a little uh background and also the requested actions. So uh there's two actions that were questioned in the board this morning. Uh authorized the general manager entered in this participation agreement uh with D W R uh for, and this is just for a pre-construction phase of the seepage recovery project. And then um what assuming that the board approves, uh then we uh we would also uh ask the board to consider advanced funding, our portion of the uh project uh uh pre-construction phase, not exceed four point one million dollars. And I'll give you some of the economic uh analysis that we did uh to hopefully convince you that this is a good idea. So uh this is a blow up of the uh terminal end of the state water project uh on the east branch. So uh you might see some notable uh recognizable features down here. Uh I would draw your attention uh to the bottom portion, bottom left portion of the uh the graph. Um and the two uh water bodies circled on. I'm sorry, was there a question? Okay, thanks. So you'll see uh Lake Matthews on the right and Lake Paris uh on the left, I'm sorry, on the left uh is Lake Matthews and on the right is uh Lake Paris, uh that gives you a geographical reference. Uh as a crow flies, it's about seventy miles uh from point to point. But you'll see uh what runs past it is the Colorado River Aqueduct uh that's owned by Metropolitan Water District. Uh Paris Dam is a D W R facility. So uh some of the notable features of this, it's the terminal delivery point uh for the east branch and only uh C V W D uh Desert Water and Metropolitan uh participate uh in the funding uh for this uh for for Lake Paris. And I'll explain why that is in a minute. So the financial obligations uh which was uh constructed as a part of the two thousand, about the two thousand three, two thousand four timeframe, when C V W D picked up um, I think eighty eight plus thousand acre feet out of the hundred thousand acre feet uh exchange agreement, uh we set the uh financial obligations for this. So under this um Metropolitan picks up the lion's share, it's about sixty three percent. We pick up about a third of it and then Desert Water picks up uh a little bit over four percent of the cost. So um dam safety concerns led to major projects, uh and I'll give you a timeline of this in a minute. But most notably, uh Paris Dam seismic remediation, and it's not my goal today to give you a rundown of what that is, but uh suffice to say that we spent a lot of money on this. Um and it was found that the foundation uh at Paris Dam was um at at risk for uh potential failure. So as a part of that process, uh there was de-watering that was needed, uh and during the de-watering process, it was found that up to seventy five hundred acre feet of seepage recovery water uh is possible. So this was done as part of two thousand sixteen D W R study and uh I think the most current numbers that we have is that this water could be produced uh including the um amortization on the facility for less than three hundred dollars an acre foot. So it's it's real very reasonably priced water. Uh and this is, and I think one of the uh attractive things about this uh project is that this water that's produced, seventy seven five hundred acre feet is in addition to our table A, so this is on top of the uh one thirty eight, three fifty that we contracted for.
Robert, can you just you just tell me real fast, because I don't remember seeing this since I've been on the board?
Right.
Why is Lake Paris important to us?
Lake Paris is important to us because when we went uh entered into the agreement uh back in, you know, when we bought the last big tranche of water from uh M W D, the hundred thousand acre feet that the board approved, um we picked up some cost obligations, uh we shifted our uh delivery point from, and I I don't have a pointer, but uh you can see on a graph uh from uh Dambles Canyon or Cedar Springs, which is, you know, about the top part, uh the water body that's on the top part, uh the uh uh chunk, the little graph here, we moved that all the way down to Lake Paris and this was negotiated with Metropolitan. So we didn't, we we have a long term lease with Met on their hundred thousand acre feet, so that was always Met's delivery point. So as a part of that negotiations, uh I believe, um what happened was, we said, okay, in order, you know, in order for get for us to get this water, we'll pick up the financial obligations, we'll pick it up all the way down to Lake Paris. So that's how it occurred.
So but it doesn't obligate us to 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 do this?
It does not obligate us to do this project. But it obligated us uh like the Paris Dam remediation project, which I'll talk about in a minute. There was two hundred million dollars worth worth of um repairs that were done. We we owned up to uh one third of that, so it was sixty million dollars worth that we, you know, that uh we've started paying on and will finish uh continue to pay for until twenty thirty five. And that's that is under contract. So this one, to me, it it is an add-on project, uh and if the board decides, hey, you know, we don't want to do this, I think Metropolitan and Desert Water are just waiting in the wings uh to pick up our share.
Our share of the of the seven point five of this?
Of the seventy five hundred acre feet, yes, that's right.
Okay.
Because, you know, they see this, you know, less than three hundred dollars acre foot as a good value in addition to uh X, you know, on top of the table A.
When you say three hundred dollars an acre foot, that's three hundred dollars an acre foot every year, but not including, that is not including what it costs to get to that three hundred. So you're you're right, that that three hundred dollars an acre is not part of?
The three hundred dollars acre foot is the total cost of this additional water because the water's already been delivered to Paris Dam.
It just seeps out.
It seeps out, so there is no transportation cost, this is all in cost.
Yeah, but to for us to get that water, that's we have to pay how much?
Three hundred dollars acre foot.
You're you're gonna exchange it with Met?
Total.
Right.
Right.
You're just gonna add that to the exchange water?
That's right, and we haven't, we haven't.
Which there's no charge for that.
Right.
Yes, it'll be three hundred dollars an acre foot, but we have to start with putting in four point one million.
Correct, I think so if we.
You're not adding that to the cost?
It it's baked in here.
Oh, it is baked in.
It is baked in here, so I didn't break it out because we don't have, we haven't fine tuned uh this number yet. So if you look at the amortization part of it, you know, uh for the facilities versus the, you know, actual annual operations and maintenance, I think, you know, the last cost, and I'm gonna probably regret saying this, uh but it's probably about fifty to seventy five dollars an acre foot. So once we paid off the capital, then, you know, basically what you're looking at is, you know, perhaps a price tag of fifty to seventy five dollars an acre foot for this water.
For electricity and.
That that's right, yeah, just, you know, normal routine maintenance.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
So so there's a direct um uh pathway from Lake Paris to 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 us? Or or that's just exchanged with with M W D?
And yes, I will talk about it in that here in the presentation if 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 that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, if uh any other questions on this general graph as far as background? Okay. So um even though we started talking about, Metropolitan actually started talking to Desert and Nelson, I think, back in twenty, you know, sixteen timeframe. So they actually initiated, Metropolitan took the lead on this uh at the request of D W R uh back in twenty seventeen. So in terms of the uh timeline, so um maybe I should have shown this first. So our obligations actually started back in two thousand and three uh with our hundred thousand acre foot transfer. So this obligated us to the thirty two point three three percent that I talked about before. Uh in twenty fourteen, uh it was decided, you know, after extensive uh, you know, engineering studies that the remediation projects uh were needed. And I I think I spelled out, you know, what the projects were uh in the in the board letter itself. But uh the big one out of two hundred million was a hundred and twenty million dollar for the um dam base um shoring up. So what they did have to do was go in and excavate, you know, uh portions of the not great directions, but on one end of the dam uh where it was not as stable uh foundations could be, they extracted some of that soil, they mixed it with concrete, so this uh process called C D S M. Um so it's it's a way to kind of make the foundation a lot more stable uh that will meet the earthquake earthquake uh standards. So our portion of this two hundred million was about sixty million dollars. So uh this project uh started in twenty fourteen and, you know, ended in twenty, was scheduled to end in twenty eighteen, but I think it more more or less finished in twenty nineteen. And um so in between, so Metropolitan and uh D W R entered this agreement as we talked about. But uh on the bottom there, uh the vent on the vent line, D W R actually initiated a charter process for project uh for this project. And this is pretty standard uh within the uh D W R project management uh process. So what happened, so they kicked off this project, they wrote a charter for it, and so now it becomes a part of their accounting system. Um so they were supposed to have taken uh the costs that were accrued uh as part of this process and assign it only to Metropolitan. and assign it only to Metropolitan. It was always the intent that I would be coming back to the board. Uh and Desert Water was going to do the same thing to their board uh to say, okay, you know, the project started. Do you want to be a part of this? Um and if you do, then we'll sign an agreement and figure out how we're gonna do the funding. Well, well, within DWR's process, what happened was when they initiated this charter process, instead of signing the cost only to MWD, they started charging it um or assigning the cost to all three agencies. And we did not find this out until literally about a month ago. So we've been paying for this all along. So fast forward to twenty twenty one, um there's a request now uh for CBWD and also uh Desert Water Agency to participate formally in this recovery system pre-construction. So this pre-construction phase is about twelve point six million dollars and I'll show you what our cost uh assignment is. So uh going on to twenty twenty two, the uh pre-construction work is supposed to be finished. And then recovery system, the actual construction is supposed to start. And once that starts, it's a it's has a price tag estimated right now to be sixteen point one million dollars. And then uh the third portion of this project is the conveyance uh system. Uh and this is actually being uh performed by Metropolitan Water District, not DWR. It's a four point seven million dollar project. So um supposed to estimate it to be completed by twenty twenty four. Uh so everything's supposed to be all done. And then I think delivery of the water, first drop of water, I think, you know, to all the agencies is supposed to start uh not too long after that. So that's the plan right now. So in terms of the project components, and I think Director Bianco asked about how uh the water actually physically gets to us. Okay, so what I'll show you is um a step-by-step process of how the water is recovered and then how we ultimately get the water delivered to CBWD. So Lake Paris has a hundred and thirty thousand acre foot um capacity. Like most dams, uh they're designed with a little bit of uh seepage uh to relieve some of the pressure, you know, through the soils. So a little bit of seepage is okay. Too much seepage, not so good. So the water um seeps underneath, goes in the ground, becomes a part of groundwater. And the idea is that we would actually install a series of five extraction wells looking uh something like this in a graphical format. It would actually pull out seventy five hundred acre feet annually on average. Uh this is being managed by DWR because this is a DWR facility. The water would be conveyed to um Metropolitan's Colorado River Aqueduct in these volumes that I show here and uh so Metropolitan would actually uh be responsible for the conveyance of it. And then ultimately it flows down uh to Lake Matthews. And Lake Matthews is a Metropolitan facility for Colorado River water. And then we would, CBWD and Desert Water would actually get this water by exchange off the Colorado River system as we are right now uh under normal deliveries. So the conveyance system uh is actually uh just to remind the board that it that will be a Metropolitan-only um uh portion of the the uh the project. So at the bottom here in this little table, uh I've highlighted uh a summary of the cost obligations for each phase as well as by agency. So the first phase is the well uh the pre-construction, which is what we're talking about. And I circled our um request here, four point oh seven million dollars uh in advanced funding uh in red. Um if we decide we want to uh proceed, then the wellfield construction, our portion of this, will be five point two two million. And then the last one, uh which is the conveyance uh system uh construction uh by Metropolitan is uh our portion of is about uh one and a half million dollars. So all in, uh cash cost uh for CBWD would be a little less than eleven million dollars out of the total thirty three million dollar project. Okay, for for this whole thing to work. This is the overhead shot, uh kind of just reemphasizing uh some of the um aspects I've talked about previously. So um this may be a little bit more detailed than what the board's seeking, but this gives you a a physical representation uh of, you know, what Lake Paris looks like. I'm sure, you know, most of you have been there before. Uh so the dam uh is actually uh this tan portion. Um yeah, again, I think I don't have a pointer, but that's fine. Uh so this that tan uh portion uh that separates the water and uh from the community there. And then uh the there is uh an actual uh passive uh seepage recovery system uh that Metropolitan owns uh that is this ninety degree bend in the pink there that's operating. And then you see the alignment of the Colorado River Aqueduct in the blue uh at the towards the bottom. Uh the work that was done previously on the Paris Dam uh sea on on Paris Dam uh remediation project is that portion uh up, um let's see, I guess, towards the top of the dam uh where you see, you know, sort of like the that barren field uh area. Uh so that was done previously. And then uh Santa Ana Valley Pipeline uh is a pipe the pipeline that just fill up Paris uh reservoir. So um the wellfield is provided in the series of uh blue triangles. Uh that's where we're planning on putting the uh the extraction wells. And then this kind of gives you some uh more detailed uh drawings of where where those are located at as well as a profile view of the uh of the wells, uh how deep they are. And then the uh conveyance system to connect uh from the wellfield to the uh Colorado River Aqueduct is shown uh in the orange um colors. And that's still being under discussion right now.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
So the local water district in Paris.
Eastern.
Do we anticipate them? I mean, I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes and you're gonna take the water out of the ground and then send it somewhere else? Um I mean, but I guess the argument is it's not their water.
That that's that's correct. Um we've had these discussions with Metropolitan. I think we've had these discussions with DWR and I think we've uh we've gotten some assurances that, you know, this this is our water, you know, at this. So you're right, it's it was blended with the local groundwater, but the contribution of it, I think, you know, can be shown to come from Lake Paris itself, which is something that all three agencies paid for and delivered.
Got it.
No, good question. Okay. So moving on, uh the agreements, a- as you can imagine, are divided by the phases. So the current agreement, we kind of talked about already, uh but just to highlight, it will terminate uh in December of twenty twenty three. So we think that should cover um you know, the to to the end of the pre-construction or um when all tasks are completed. And this will be collected through the statement charges. Uh so again, uh using property taxes, this is, you know, this is possible because this is part of the state water project system. So the future agreements, uh I'll show uh and I'm sorry, uh so the agreement uh is for that agreement, it will be just agreement between CBWD and DWR. And then the other uh two agencies will have their own separate agreements with Department of Water Resources. So future agreements uh going from top uh to bottom is a construction agreement, again, uh just between us and uh DWR. Then uh an additional funding agreement between uh Metropolitan and CBWD will be needed for the conveyance system construction since they're taking on the uh uh the task of that uh construction. And then the last uh piece is the operating agreement between the all four agencies. So there's quite quite a few more uh that still need to be done, but we figured for the uh, you know, sake of um expediency, uh is, you know, better kind of break everything down so that the uh process uh doesn't hold uh isn't held up uh by the lack of um approvals. So um next I want to cover a little bit about the finances of this and this uh show hopefully why uh prepaying this uh to the to a four point oh seven, about four point one million is a good idea. So this uh graph um on the left shows the uh timeline between twenty seventeen to twenty thirty five. The reason why I have twenty thirty five here as a terminal point is that is the current uh ending date uh for the existing contract with DWR. So um we've, so this shows the gray bars uh have shown the uh cost contributions that were uh placed on our statement charges. So to date, we paid a total of about six hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. And the other agencies have paid their proportional share as well. So the first option I'll show you is uh basically the the do nothing option. So the do nothing option is if the board says, you know, we don't want to prepay and we just want to continue putting it on statement charges, uh we can certainly do that. This shows you the payment schedule. Uh so with the exception of twenty twenty two, the rest of the payments are about uh three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars a year.
Robert, is this an example of what the state water project tax pays for?
This is an example of what the state water project tax pays for. Yes, sir. So uh baked in here in the orange bars uh is the DWR payment um plant, well, the uh DWR um project interest rate of four point six one percent. And all those four point six one percent uh may seem high. This is something that was um agreed to and baked into our uh contract for any projects that DWR does. Um and I can't remember when we signed this, but it was quite a while back. Want to say probably like the seventies or eighties. And I've and just to kind of head off any potential questions, um you know, I think, you know, some I've gotten the question, okay, so uh why did we sign that, you know, for such a long-term period? And uh I think, you know, the reminder that was provided to me was back in the seventies and eighties, the inflation was actually double digits. So when we um, you know, signed that at the time, it seemed like a good deal, you know, obviously through the layers of time, you know, depending on where you are, you know, it may not be or it may be. So um the graph on the right just simply shows the accumulated cost over time, uh you know, with these series of payments. So you can see at the terminal uh point uh twenty thirty five, you know, the cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of five point four million dollars uh in total if we choose to pay the project interest rate. Okay, so what I want to show you is the effect of if we decide uh that it's a good idea to uh do the prepayment one time uh for next year. So um within DWR's accounting system, it's pretty rigid. And uh the idea would be that we would pay uh the four point oh seven million. I'm requesting four point one just for account for any kind of um you know, um misrepresentation that they might uh well. Uh they need to give us, you know, the exact number. Uh we think it's, you know, about four point oh seven, but um anyways, just in case there's a little bit of um leeway that we need, I think the, you know, four point one should cover it. So we put uh paid a four point oh seven uh and with the uh six hundred and seventy six thousand dollars we paid. The idea is that we would give credit reimbursements uh up to up until twenty thirty five to the tune of about forty one thousand dollars a year. So that's why you see those blue bars uh below the below the zero line. So those are credits that would be signed to us on the statement charges. So if I aggregate uh all the uh blue bars together, this is what we'll get. You'll see a hump uh in twenty twenty two, obviously representing the one-time payment and a steady decrease in overall value of the contributions that we have. And that difference is the one point three million dollars in savings. So hopefully that's relatively clear.
So Robert, I have a question. So if we um if we proceed and 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 pay this amount upfront, does that displace or eliminate any other capital projects that we had planned on doing with that money during this period?
I don't believe so, sir. And the reason why I say that is because this will be coming off the state water project tax. So um again, I think, you know, the board knows better than I do that this state water project tax can only pay for very uh specific projects. So uh certainly I don't think there's any projects that we're doing uh internally to CBWD that's, you know, baked in the CIP that can draw off that tax. You know, I could be mistaken, but uh I nothing nothing comes to mind. So uh this these fund these funds, and thank you for um bringing that up, um have been vetted through finance and we do have the money in the budget uh in FY twenty two to account for this prepayment. So it does not displace anything. Hopefully.
So so what this really does, I mean, the the request is as you have in the report for four point one, but really we're looking at a commitment of eleven million dollars.
In sum, right, in total. So this is simply the pre-construction phase of it.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, um there's a the matter of um California Environmental Quality Act uh c- coverage uh for doing any kind of construction work. So right now, uh Department of Water Resources is the lead agency for this, um since it is on their property. So uh they're responsible for the project construction operation. So they um, you know, have filed uh the uh application for the environmental impact statement. And we're responsible agencies. Uh so when we get to that point of construction, uh I think this board has to take an action to um, you know, uh on whatever the outcome of that is, but we don't have to do it right now because the pre-construction activities of funding are categorically exempt. Okay, so in summary, um I think Director Igel, you must have seen this uh slide already. Our uh, you know, total cost is about eleven million dollars uh for uh commitments. And this is in twenty twenty one dollars uh with no no interest baked in. Uh our portion of this will be uh a little bit over twenty four hundred acre feet annually. And I think this is, I would characterize this as rather uh drought-proof because uh this really depends on the lake elevation levels. And now that the uh dam has been mediated, uh I don't see any reason why, you know, it couldn't operate to its full capacity. And again, uh just to re-empsize, this is new water uh in addition to our table A, um which is very nice. So um let's see, I think we already talked about the advanced funding. So again, we avoid one point three million dollars in interest payments uh in future credits. So the future cost obligations, I think, uh just re- um just to restate, uh these would definitely require board approval. Uh it's about five point two two million dollars for seepage uh the construction of it and one point five two million dollars for conveyance system. So uh these are two different projects. So we would be paying these uh to do two different entities. Uh one would be to Metropolitan, one would be to um uh DWR. So for DWR, it's five point two two million that we owe. You know, because just because we commit ourselves, if we commit ourselves to uh cash payment uh for this portion of it, doesn't obligate us to uh cash payment for the five point two two million. That's still under discussion and we always have the ability to, you know, spread that cost out at four point six one percent interest rate. Uh you know, when we get to that point. So we haven't uh determined the payments yet on that. So uh with that, uh just re-empsize the actions and uh to see if uh the board has any any additional questions.
When you did that that analysis of the one point three million dollar savings with those lines intersecting, did you use any discount, present value discounting for that?
Present value discount.
Like, because you're making a big payment now compared to paying money later?
Right.
So the payments made in the future would have
No, I I.
A discount applied to them?
Right.
I'm just wondering how much that closes the gap if we do that. I mean, if you put in, let's say, a two percent discount factor in there.
Oh, I see. For the uh for the future value of that money?
Yeah, because you really, you should discount it something.
Right. Um what I did, uh President Powell, was simply took the payment schedule that was provided to us by DWR. Uh and you're right, I mean, I could go back and see if they actually baked in. Usually what they do is I think they, you know, uh put in like a three percent uh cost of interest, you know, over time. I think that's pretty normal. So I guess what I don't know, um right off right off the top of my head is whether this three hundred and forty nine dollar uh million, three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars, you know, includes that discount factor or not.
So I'd like to hear from some of the other board members. I mean, usually my uh instinct is to, if we have the cash, pay it off now and avoid the interest payments. But um with what I know on what's coming down the pipe with, you know, the twin tunnels and I mean, there's and there's so many projects uh um and and money that that we have to allocate it to that that I think I'm more inclined to spread this out um over uh to to twenty thirty five and and just make the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment. That's that's, I think that's where I'm leaning. Well, do we need to make this decision today? I I'd like to know the an answer to the question on the present value discount.
Well, I think um the reason why I brought this back right here today is because if the board is if it's the board's desire to prepay this, uh DWR needs um to get our commitment, I think, relatively soon so they can actually put it into the July statement of charges. Um so whether it's uh three hundred and uh forty nine thousand dollars uh for the future or uh the four point oh seven, they need, you know, they need agreements to be executed. Uh so basically, if if the board says, you know, uh we'll hold on. So basically, if if the board says, you know, we'll hold off, I think the default position is the three hundred and forty-nine thousand. I mean, we don't really have to do anything except to get the board approval that you want to be in this project. So it's really the funding decision.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Director Nelson, do you have any thoughts?
Did you say that Matt and Desert also prefunded this project?
Right. So yeah, thanks for that question. I don't know if I was a hundred percent clear. So Metropolitan actually put in, I think, about seven and a quarter million dollars in cash upfront, I think, back in twenty seventeen. And the idea was that DWR would draw on that as needed, you know, for the pre-construction work until CVWD and Desert can make up this mine. So no, that did not happen. So Metropolitan's intent was always to pre-fund this. Desert Water has expressed to me that they they are going to pre-fund this. And actually, I think, you know, Mr. Kraus actually conversed with me last week after reading the board letter and said, yeah, we're going to go down the same path and request, you know, pre-funding on this as well. Although, you know, obviously their portion is a lot smaller at four point three seven percent, but still.
Since Metropolitan is getting better water quality out of this versus the Colorado River water that go, well, I guess it's, no, I guess it's all, it's that the groundwater that's pumped or the tube that's pumped, would it be similar quality to Lake Paris? Maybe even better, huh?
Um, I don't know what the quality is, sir. I'm not sure whether I've seen the reports to it, but yeah, so I I couldn't say, but certainly I think, you know, the benchmark, I guess, Lake Paris, you know, state water project quality probably would not be a bad assumption.
Well, I mean, we're really, I mean, I'm in favor of the project. I mean, part of the project makes a lot of sense. Cheap water, TR Table A entitlement, cheap water, three hundred dollars, but it's relevant, right? So it's a good project. It looks good. So the question is, is whether we we get a loan or, you know, kind of either state, either we are, get a loan of four point six percent less the discount rate or whether we just put in finances. Or or whether we just pay it off. So how does this, remind me again, how does this affect our overall reserve levels that we work so hard on in our latest cross research studies?
Right. So I'll start. And if I call off half, I'll look to our finance department to correct me. So we did bake the consideration of this into the reserves and the, you know, discussion. I think, well, I guess we'll be hearing from the finance director shortly on the state water project tax side. But I think all, you know, the my my request, you know, for this four point one million dollar pre-funding has been baked in into that consideration.
You know, the assuming, this is thirteen years, right? So assuming that the interest rates or return on investment on our invested monies remains low for thirteen years, it probably makes sense to prepay even if the discounting is not in that one point three million. But but you don't know that, right? I mean, we don't know what rates are going to do over the next thirteen years. I mean, we probably have a pretty decent idea over the next three years. Because the Fed keeps saying they're going to keep things low, but how long is that going to last? So you know, those savings are based on some assumptions that may not be true. And 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 that assumption is that, you know, that our invested funds are going to continue to earn these low numbers for thirteen years. Hard to say. I mean, it's possible that rates go up to more historic numbers like five or seven percent and that four point six one is going to look pretty good. We we don't know. I mean, there's just no way of knowing.
Right. And that's a that's a great point. But as we build our reserves, we have cash available. I don't know whether this allows for advanced payments. But if we saw interest rates go up and we wanted to pay off what was remaining, we might have the money in reserves. We might not. I'm just trying to.
We could, we could use, if we had the extra money, we could, we could pay off some of the twin tunnel money earlier. There's a lot of things we could use the money for. I just think on this project, I mean, we've squeezed our reserves so much as going as far as changing our reserve target that I think just just starting this thing out, and John's right, you know, we're assuming that interest rates are going to stay low for the next thirteen years. And that's what gets us this one point three. It probably won't.
Impossible to say. So, you know, the other thing is, I think, to Director Aguilar's question, sort of another way to answer that would be, you know, we are sort of doing a hybrid approach to covering our state water project costs and and that we are using some West Rack funds for that. And to the extent that those fund, right? There's there's that twenty, I forget the number now. It was really high, the ninety million, and now it's twenty million.
Twenty points.
Twenty-seven million dollars. So if you if you avoid this four point oh seven million dollar payment right now, that that potentially takes a little bit of pressure off of the West Rack.
Right. And I think it's, maybe I was not completely clear. So the four point four, you know, four point one million. It would, okay, so, you know, I'll just give you the scenario. So if the board agrees, okay, you know, that's that's the scenario you want to go with, it's it'd be actually two point oh five million in FY twenty-two and two point oh five million starting in FY twenty-three. Because again, it's payments in January and July. So it actually spreads across two fiscal years. Now, you're right. I think overall, I mean, you still have to pay, you know, the four point one total, but it's not all in one fiscal year.
So the advanced payment would be broken into two pieces.
Yes, sir.
Still, still, it's going to be in the budget.
It's in the budget.
It's going to hit you one way or the other.
Right, right. I was just clarifying.
Yeah, I get it. Well, that helps. But I don't know. I mean, I'm usually for getting this, this like a little arbitrage benefit that it's it's a small, it's a small benefit for what, you know, when we're looking at this twenty percent increase on the West Rack for the next four, we have fifteen this year and then twenty 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 twenty. I mean, I think we made it pretty clear that we're going to be looking for ways, you know, assuming we approve the next item on the agenda and send out the Prop two eighteen notice, we're still going to be looking for ways to to take a little pressure off of that and maybe not go twenty next year. Maybe we do something less. So this would help if we don't pre-f, if we don't advance pay.
So if I could briefly go back to addressing Director Nelson's question on the reserves. So before we received board direction to look at doing the one cent increase in the state water project tax starting next fiscal year, we've actually been running the numbers on this. As you recall from the discussion on the reserves, the reserves are very low right now and we're looking at building up to the new twenty million dollar reserve level by the end of fiscal year twenty-six approximately. So it's it's not like we had this money readily available absent that one cent tax increase for next year. We were planning to do an interfund loan from the sanitation fund to pay for that. So we felt strongly enough to say it's worth going through that extra procedure of having a short-term loan from sanitation to go ahead and make the repayment, because it did intuitively make sense to me, right? No one, no one knows what interest rates are going to be for this whole period.
Well, that's that's good to know, Jeff. I just, I mean, so did you do the analysis on discounting those future payments?
No, I did not.
So then how do you know if it's beneficial or not?
Well, you're right. It's just looking at the these numbers intuitively, how much.
I'm guessing these are nominal values. And so you're basically saying payment thirteen years from now is the same value as the same payment today. And that's not true. We know that's true. So I don't know.
Can we make a motion on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we make a motion to approve with the payment spread out over thirteen years?
I'll second that. Wanted to give Director Nelson a chance before we vote, if you have further input.
So I, thanks, John. I was just trying to pencil, I have a, I have a piece of paper here and just trying to pencil out the two percent over fourteen years, about twenty twenty-five. And I, you know, I, I agree with the point. I'm I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments before we vote? No? All right, let's do the roll call vote.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Good. That passed fire.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here's a fun one. Item C is increasing the state water project levy by a penny.
Thank you, President Powell, members of the board. So I just wanted to point out, you know, this is the first of two times on this agenda, we have a pair of items that have a symbiotic nature to them. And I want the board to be well aware of that before we proceed. This is basically a follow-up, a formal follow-up to the study session I am from just last Thursday where we discussed the impact of the state water project decisions along with the replenishment fund decisions. And so this, this is presuming that you're going to approve the next item also. So it's, I know, I know the attorney right here is probably saying, uh, you know, but that's the the hard truth of what we're doing here. So the both are dependent upon each other being approved. So this this first action will be raising the state water project tax by one cent beginning next year. And it will also be presuming that we'll be allocating twenty point six two million of the the allocable funds, which we've identified ninety-six million is can be allocable to the West and Mission Creek replenishment funds. Per board direction, we're just allocating twenty point six two million of that. So that is the the first part of that for you to be aware of. There's a little PowerPoint here. Would you like me to go through this? I see a nod, no.
We've seen it.
You've seen it. There's nothing new here. So with that, we'd ask you to approve this action. And with that, we will execute the change in this rate for both Riverside and Imperial Counties.
Jeff, I have one quick question and I
Yes, sir.
and it ties back to what we just did with spreading out the the payment for that project over over many years. And I and I think I heard you say that the cost of that project was baked in into this rate, into this proposed rate increase here on this tax. Could you just briefly explain to me how that changes this as well now, either in?
It is a very minor change overall to what we're looking at. As I said, we were right on the edge without this project and without the one cent tax increase. And our reserves are very bad right now.
So we just, we just, in in essence, we just get closer to our targets a lot sooner or?
Yeah, well, that's true. That is, in essence.
Pretty much it?
That is true, but you're, don't don't think of it as a big leap. Okay.
No, I get it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir.
I just want to say that this is probably the biggest decision that I've had to make since I've been on the board. And that raising any taxes or any of our water rates is was really important to me, as you guys know. And to find any way possible to to not do it is is has been my goal. But I do think that for the Coachella Valley as a whole and that where we where we started from and where we are now, that it is needed that that we do this. It's, I believe it's very equitable in the way it's done and that that this benefits the whole valley.
Just one question, Jeff. So this is just to confirm, this does, these costs do are including the Lake Paris project discussion that we just had?
It is, to the extent of two point oh five million in fiscal year twenty-two, the year coming up, and two point oh five in the year following. So if we are paying it the normal way, that cost will be spread over the coming years. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
If I may, Mr. President, just again for the record, we did receive a comment letter. So I just want to add that to the record.
So I thank you, so.
Just, I'm just noting that for the record.
Yeah, no, that's just noted for the record as part of this particular item on the agenda. But as you mentioned, the board has the letter, the public has access to the letter.
Correct. And that's it.
I'll just say that every cost that we're putting in the state water project fund is being vetted by legal counsel.
Ah, so the monkey's on his back. Hmm.
Well, it's
It's actually, when you say legal counsel, are you referring to best best in figure or or?
Colton Tuno. Michael Colton Tuno reviewed this item.
Not yet. Okay. Give or no?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And then the all-important nine D.
Thank you, sir. Since I'm here, I'll go ahead and give this next one just for fun.
That's next. Not this one.
Not this one. Got it, sorry. Jumping out ahead of myself.
Yeah. Appreciate that. So the staff's recommendation is for the board to approve the mailing of the Prop two eighteen notices for East and West replenishment funds. As you know, the Mission Creek does not require one at this point. I'll just say that briefly that our process that we're going through began back in February two thousand twenty when we hired Corillo as our engineering firm to help us conduct the five-year cost service study. We've had a lot of work has gone in since then, collecting the all the data and revenues and expenses, water information, customer data. And we've had six study sessions with the board over the previous months. And I I know that the board knows I'm kind of speaking to public. You know, board direction was to do everything we can in our power to reduce the potential for rate increases while still being a mission of providing our services at the level that the public expects to see. So today, we are asking you to approve the mailing of the these notices for East and Rack. And the ratings agencies and everyone else that's watching use this as a signal of a willingness of the board to move forward with that. When we come back on June second at the special board meeting, asking you to approve these rates. of the board to move forward with that. When we come back on June second at the special board meeting, asking you to approve, uh, these rates following the, uh, forty-five day public hearing period. Uh, with that, I'd just like to, uh, thank everyone from, uh, the Corillo team who's been great. All my colleagues, uh, from the various departments have done a lot of work. And, uh, one of my, uh, members of my finance team who just, uh, departed, I'd like to call it, Thomas Rice. He just finished his term with the district, uh, last week. He's been our kind of resident canal and replenishment expert. So he retired and moved to Arizona. But I have, uh, Alex Bugby and, uh, from Corolla is on the line to answer any questions relating this. I think we've probably covered everything last week, uh, the study session. Alex, you're on the line? Oh, I'm sorry, and Lufi Karouf is also. And Lufi, uh, Karouf from BB and K. Thank you, Jeff. And Lufi has done, uh, reviews of the replenishment, uh, draft reports. And as we said, stated in the staff report, uh, those are technically in draft form right up until the, the board, uh, approves the rates in gen. Are there any questions from any of the board?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say, I, I'm gonna approve the mailings of the, um, but, but I, I'm, I'm not, but I'm not signaling to the public that I'm going to, um, vote for all of those rate increases over the next five years.
Uh, I appreciate that and, and, and thank you. And just, just to clarify what I said, when we come back on June second, we'll be asking you to approve one year of those rate increases, uh, instead of the five years that are authorized under the receiving of the Prop two eighteen report and study.
Yeah, you know, I had a chance to call, uh, golf, the general manager, one of the golf courses in the valley, um, who pays the West Rack, West Ritey, and I just thought, you know, I just want to see, I want to hear the reaction, you know? And, yeah, but the main reaction was, I mean, they're already doing their budgets for the coming season. And, and if there's a fifteen percent increase, they need to know. I mean, so the timing is a little difficult for them, and I think we need to get word out ASAP, you know, through whatever channels we have to help folks. So at least that when they approve their budget for the coming year, it's accurate, because that's a big change for them. Uh, and, you know, they were using, uh, about eight hundred acre feet. Or no, 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 I'm sorry, they weren't. They're, they're, this particular golf course, they're, for the golf portion of the community, it was using about eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars of water. So that's fifteen percent on top of that, right? So you're talking twelve thousand dollar, thirteen thousand dollar increase on that, and plus they had the HOA, so, which was about twenty-six thousand dollars. So they need to know. I mean, I, it was a little bit like, you know, well, you've been threatening to do this for a couple of years now, and you never did. And I said, well, I think it's gonna happen this year, so, uh, you need to put it in your budget. Um, you know, and, and not to, not to make light of it, because it's a big deal, these rate increases. One, we're gonna work hard not to do all of them. But two, uh, you know, golf, um, which this affects golf more directly than anything. I mean, it affects the domestic rate too, but it really has a big impact on these private, uh, companies that operate golf and, and those kind of communities. But, uh, it has experienced a little bit of a renaissance. I mean, golf has become much more popular during COVID. Uh, and that's, um, uh, that's a real positive. These communities are selling memberships and tee times and things. So even though overall, I think the economic conditions have been tough, golf has done a little better than average during COVID, and so that's one thing we got. Um, anyways, that's. He didn't hang up the phone.
Hey, John, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, I have a question, Jeff. Hey, Jeff, we've, we've been working out at the Joint Water Policy Advisory Committee for the East Valley, um, you know, well replenishment program for some time on, and looking at, uh, you know, the budget and uh, when was the last time that we adjusted that, just so I, I, I kind of bring that up at this point? I mean, John mentioned, we've been talking about this for several years, but we went to sixty-six dollars over in the East Valley, uh, what, in two thousand sixteen, I believe?
Five, five years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and we've been talking in that committee, I sit on that committee, and, um, we've been talking to that committee for the five years, and every single year, we have recommended that we would, um, uh, you know, go up, um, seven dollars on that. And every single year, the group, uh, you know, even hot in Boston, you know, didn't like it, but understood, uh, that that was, you know, a possibility, and no one really objected to that. Um, so I, you know, I, they, they, I think we've been very transparent about the, the outlook that, that with cost and so forth. And so I'm, I, I guess I'm supportive because the, um, because we've looked at it with a fine-tooth comb. And, um, like you say, we've had six or seven meetings just this year on this thing. Um, and there's a lot involved too. So I, I would, uh, I would move approval, uh, of the item.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, good. We, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any of the discussion before we vote? I think we've got him. All right, let's do roll call vote.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, okay. So that passed five oh. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the next two items are Oasis board items. So if I may, just for the record, uh, a number of years ago, this board went through the process of recusing and then requalifying one board member to establish a forum of matters regarding the Oasis project due to conflict of interest or property, this stuff, various of, uh, three board members. So with that, on this item as well as the separate item for the Public Facilities Corporation Board, this would be the time for the recused, uh, board members to, uh, leave the dais. And then we'll call them back afterwards. So that is Director Bianco and Director Nelson, who will simply sign on.
Thank you. Do, do I have, I see him waving. Do we have acknowledgement that Director Nelson has left the meeting? It's a technology question. Yes? Okay, thank you. Good. All right, so on to item nine E. Jeff?
Thank you, sir. So I just have some general comments I'd like to make first. Um, so this is the second set of items I referred to that are interconnected. And, uh, I, I look at, uh, so you'll need a vote yes on both of these items, all three of you, for this to work. Um, as well as May twenty-fifth, when we bring the preliminary official statement to you, same thing for them. But I, you know, I view this thing as like kind of sitting down with a mortgage broker to get ready to do a mortgage, and you're going through all these papers and, you know, just sign them all, and it's, it's gonna be really bewildering. So, um, up to now, you know, we focused on a couple of key things with the board. Uh, we're borrowing fifty-two million dollars. This is the inaugural debt issuance for a fund. This financing a very large capital project that's been a long time in the making, uh, for getting the support of it. Uh, the debt payment schedule that we structured is to specifically to minimize costs through the construction period and through the next five years, which just coincidentally, uh, aligns with the cost of rate study we just are, are finishing. So we have basically no, uh, no payments for the first year and then interest only for years two through five. Um, after that time, the, uh, the debt service payments will increase by approximately a million a year up to approximately three point one million a year thereafter. So that will have impact on fiscal year twenty-seven on. So when we come back doing a rate study, you know, five years from now, there should be no surprises about that right off the bat. There is a million-dollar bump in expenses for the next twenty-five years, uh, for debt service for this project. And of course, all of that, you know, these figures are preliminary projections based upon current market conditions, and they're always subject to change until we finalize it. Uh, this, as we've also discussed with the board, uh, the funding for this financial instrument involves an injection of discretionary property taxes. Yeah, that's aligned, in alignment with the debt service payment schedule. Uh, but it's being done in a way that doesn't handcuff the board on those decisions, because to whatever extent the East replenishment fund is able to generate sufficient funds to cover its own O and M and, uh, debt service on its own, then you can always dial back on how much you're allocating for the discretionary property taxes. Now, there are some terms in these documents that, uh, uh, may be familiar to you and there may not. So, you know, we're gonna be introducing a couple of new terms or reintroducing a couple of terms here. And they're, you know, they're part of the, you know, confusing part of this whole thing. So things like, I've been using the term simple revenue bond kind of language where you see throughout the document, uh, references to certificates of participation, um, representing a proportionate undivided interest in installment payments. Okay, so that's where you glare at the right mortgage broker and like, okay. And also, we're talking about regular board action items versus the second set of items for the Public Facilities Corporation. So, you know, that's, that's new to you for sure, except for, uh, uh, President Powell, who is here back in nineteen ninety-one, I believe, uh, when we formed this corp. Have you been on the board that long?
No.
Ninety-eight.
Oh, ninety-eight, okay. So you just missed the, all the fun when this happened before. Nineteen ninety-seven was the last time this, uh, Public Facilities Corporation, uh, board was, uh, activated. And it was to fund a fifteen-million-dollar, uh, flood control, uh, certificate, prop participation bond way back. It's long since been paid off. So this is another new set of terms. Um, so because of all the complexity here, that's why I have a couple all-stars on the line. We've got Doug Brown, our bond counsel, and Darren Brown, our financial advisor from PFM. And they're gonna walk you through, uh, this series of house, what I call housekeeping documents, um, in these two separate Oasis items. And, uh, they'll be able to answer all the technical questions that you have. But I just want to clarify that, you know, what we're doing today is to kind of spread the load on all the stuff you're going through. This is a lot of documents. This doesn't include the key document, the prelim, preliminary official statement that's gonna come to you on May twenty-fifth. You know, we could have loaded up all this stuff then. But it was a good suggestion of our bond counsel, why don't you start taking part of this stuff to the board early? So that's, that's what we're doing. Um, so before I hand it over to Doug, I just want to, uh, let you know where we're going from here. So as I said, next steps, uh, May twenty-fifth will be the, uh, board's gonna be asked to receive and approve the preliminary official statement. And again, we expect all three of you to be present and voting yes. If, uh, we have a conflict on availability, we'll have to reschedule, but, uh, I just want you to be aware of that. June fourth is the date we're expecting Standard and Poor's to give us our rating, which is a big driver of what the expected, uh, interest, uh, costs will be. And then June, by June eleventh, the preliminary official statement will be posted officially. Um, and I just say that, the whole thing, all the, uh, very meticulous reviews about disclosure that, uh, Doug Brown went through with the board before, this is kind of the heightened period of sensitivity about discussions with the public. So, uh, I just want to put that out there. Uh, pricing of the bond is expected to happen on June eighteenth, and then we'd be closing on June twenty-fifth. And that's when we'll really be done with the process. Uh, there's some really, uh, great things that are included in this is, uh, there's a, a really, uh, about a dozen people have been working on this for months and coming up with the really best financial instrument that, uh, the board, you know, could expect to have. And one of the features is that we're actually capturing some of the prior costs that have been going on that are going to be included in the bond. And, and Doug will be talking about this. But this, there's normally like a sixty-day window, but we're actually able to go back farther. And as I've talked about before, this is one where we, we've been spending money on this project for some time now. But, uh, we're able to get it all brought in, and it's actually going to help assist with the East replenishment fund reserve almost immediately. As it's refunding, some of the costs have already been paid out of that fund for this year and even last year. Um, so with that, I'm gonna hand it over.
Jeff, I, before you hand it over.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'll be here still.
Um, just, it's a quick question, and it's going back to a comment you made about expectations in year twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes.
And I just wanted to get some clarification on, on what you meant by that, expectations. I, I would imagine from, from what fund?
So what I was saying is, so the, so the, the East replenishment fund obligation will be going up about a million dollars. So it will be part of the consideration of the next cost of service study, whether you look at, uh, do further increase the, uh, discretionary property taxes we've talked about, or you have the option of, is there a rate impact? Is there some combination? I'm just saying.
Okay, well, I, okay. Well, I think I get what you're saying now. So then this is what I've, this is part of the conversation, is that we, we understand that from now until the end of this payoff of this debt, we're probably gonna have a number of cost of studies or.
Yeah.
Right? But I think that, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe the other board members can chime in if, if they, if they think that, that perhaps I was looking at this the wrong way, but my thinking, and I thought our thinking was that we would be, uh, shifting that discretionary tax, um, to pay the debt of this project throughout the years.
Yeah, for thirty years. That's correct. That's correct.
So I, 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 I just wanted to make sure that you weren't saying the comment you made, because that was something that you didn't understand or that somehow we, we weren't conveying to you, but
No, you were.
It is expected that through the life of this loan, that, that the discretionary tax would, would follow so that we could make that debt payment.
Yes, and, and, and part of the documents that we have before you includes, uh, a document that includes that, uh, discussion where we are dedicating the use of discretionary property taxes. However, as I said, it's not handcuffing the board. If, if the, the fund ended up becoming healthy on its own, you wouldn't have to do to the extent. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right.
And I, and I guess, Jeff, for, for purposes of, of future boards, and I know that a lot of times it's important for us to capture intent, although they might not be binding, but it is important to, to at least give folks in the future a sense of what, of what the strategy was and, and the thoughts were. A lot of times we look at those things to, to try to get a sense of what, you know, what was the thinking? And so would you say that in anywhere in these documents that if, if a future board would be able to review this, that, that that intent would be captured in, in those documents? Or, or is it open to someone interpreting as, oh?
No.
You know, we never thought we were going to do that.
I believe it's very clear in the document. I think it's also very clear to the ratings agencies and the people that are underwriters going to be marketing these funds to. That is, that is what's going to be discussed. The, the board has made a strong indication that they're going to be putting a adequate amount of discretionary property taxes in this fund every single year to cover the debt service.
Okay. Maybe what we need to do, thinking forward as we get to the future cost of, cost of service studies, and anytime that we have to, you know, look at what might be the need for, for an increase, is we should be able to, to follow this project. I don't know if it's as a line item or what, but, but always, you know, remember and, and reference, you know, the, the intention of, of, of how that debt was created and, and how it was meant to be repaid. It's a suggestion from me.
It will absolutely be a line item for thirty years unless the board would take an opportunity to prepay it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, and, you know, that's certainly my understanding and commitment as well, just to be clear. Hey, Jeff, you mentioned June twenty fifth is the day of pricing of these bonds. We're not expected to meet on that day, are we?
No, the board doesn't, doesn't have, I just wish to give you the dates of the key events.
Just be clear.
Right. The only, the only two are today and May twenty fifth.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
So if there's no questions regarding my introductory comments, I'll turn over Doug and let him walk through the first set of documents from the first item.
Good morning, Chair and Directors. As your finance manager indicated, you're going to be taking two actions today. You're being asked to consider two actions today with respect to the Oasis project. And then after you consider those two items, if you vote affirmatively, we'll move to the financing corporation and the finance corporation will be asked to just one action. So the first action that you're being asked to take today as the board of the Water District is what we refer to as a reimbursement resolution. Jeff alluded to the fact that the district's staff's desire is to reimburse itself for costs which have been incurred prior to, to today, and also construction costs that occurred between now and the end of June when the financing closes. The federal tax code requires in that situation that the board take an official action indicating that it intends to reimburse itself. If you take this action today, you will be able to reimburse yourself on a taxing debt basis for all costs, construction costs that have been incurred in the last sixty days as well as between today's date and the date that the financing actually closes. So happy to answer any questions with respect to that first reimbursement resolution.
I have a quick question for you. And I think I, I understand what you said. I, I think I heard a sixty day limit. And my question is, obviously, the, the design efforts for this project are probably not within the sixty days, but am I correct to, to, to assume that, that the design costs or maybe planning costs, which I don't really have a figure for at this point, but I imagine is maybe close to a million dollars or more? Is that, is that part of what we could be, what, what we could reimburse ourselves?
But no, the, the tax code allows you to reimburse in an unlimited amount, virtually unlimited amount, what we call, refer to as soft costs. It's a planning, design, you know, legal, environmental. The reimbursement resolution is only necessary to reimburse you for land acquisition and actual construction costs. So it is anticipated that there'll be reimbursement of all of the design and engineering costs in addition to the construction costs.
So, so we are, okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President, to, probably to counsel. So I noticed that on the, on the Exhibit A, on the project description, that appears probably not only in the resolution, but on other documents as well, that the description of the project, particularly in the, in the third line, talks about, I'm quoting, "An expansion of the system to land in the oasis area and other related facilities." And so this is just a clarification question. So is it not necessary? Because I don't, I do not see another exhibit that either shows a map of the oasis area or that describes it in more detail. And I don't know if that could be a future issue with respect to someone who might object to something in these documents and just wanted to ask the question. Does that need to be clarified?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to that. The tax code only provides a general description of the project because the only time this will become an issue is if the IRS for some reason were to audit this financing. They just want to have a general description of the project. There's not a requirement for new and balanced description or a more detailed description of the project itself.
Thank you.
I think Director Haggler makes a great point, though, and, and I don't know if where, and maybe it's not here, but there has to be a place where the project is, is defined either by a legal description of boundaries or by some sort of exhibit. Where, where, where are we putting that if it's not here as to what?
Well, there's a tremendous amount of information in the preliminary official statement that's not in these documents. That, and that's what's going to be coming on May twenty fifth.
But there is somewhere a document, as Director Haggler mentioned, that, that could define what the project limits are?
Darren, can you chime in? Does the POS have sufficient information included to cover that?
Yes, Jeff. So the preliminary official statement will have a pretty in-depth description of the project for, for that purpose. So you are correct.
And maybe, is maybe the answer, it's not needed for, for this, what we're doing now? I mean, that could be the answer.
It, it, it isn't needed for this. We're just trying to get a whole bunch of the extra documents, extra items covered first so you're not overwhelmed with it all at one time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, shall we move on to the second document?
Yeah, would, would the, would the board's party be approved the first resolution before it moves on to the second, or would you prefer to hear about the second one as well and then vote on?
It's a good point. Do you want, does the board want to just approve all the items as a group?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would ask Doug, would you prefer to have each resolution adopted separately?
Yeah, I think there will need to be a vote on each resolution separately. We can do it, you know, we can do the first resolution now, or we can wait and do two votes at the end of the presentation subcommittee.
Oh, there's only two. All right, well, let's do the first one. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? This is four eight four one dash three eight six two dash.
This is the reimbursement resolution.
Yeah, the reimbursement one.
Twenty twenty one dash.
I don't have the rest remembered, yeah. Oh, I got you. Yeah, I don't know what I'm looking. It's.
I'll move the resolution.
We have a motion, and I'll second that. We have a motion to second. Yeah, twenty twenty one dash oh nine, sorry. Okay, any other discussion? Well, I guess we can just vote. Do we, do we need a roll call vote? Doesn't really matter. All, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Yeah, so that passed three oh.
Okay.
All right, on to the next one.
Okay, the second resolution before you today is generally speaking, at authorization for your board president and your general manager and other appropriate officers to sign various documents that will be needed at the closing of the transaction in June. The reason we're asking, one of the reasons we're asking for approval today is these documents form the basis for the presentation to the rating agencies into the underwriters and sets the structure. So even though they won't be signed until June, it's important that the board weigh in and give its authorization for these so that the other parts of this financing process can be concluded. So the resolution that's before you includes about eight or ten different authorizations, and I'm going to walk through those and give you a brief description of what the various documents do. If you have more detailed questions about those documents, or if you have any answers, then feel free to ask if you still want. Section one of the resolution authorizes the installment purchase agreement. And this installment purchase agreement is the district's obligation to make payments for the facility over the term of the financing. So to analogize this, think about this as, as if you're doing a lease or an installment acquisition of some piece of equipment for your business or, or for your home. This installment purchase agreement makes very clear that the only revenues of the district that are made available to make these payments are EFRAC revenues, including the discretionary property tax that's being proposed to be allocated to the financing. The authorization here, you're, you're delegating to the president, the general manager, and other officers in consultation with the general council and the bond council to actually execute this document in late June. Any questions on the installment purchase agreement?
Just to clarify.
The second item is a trust agreement.
I'm just going to clarify that these, all these other items are the other attachments.
Right.
Okay, the section two of the resolution approves the trust agreement. While it's a clearly linked document, you know, I, I think that to you it's more in the nature of an expert agreement. It governs the trustee, the bond trustee, receiving the money from the district, holding the money, investing the money between the time it receives the money and when it pays it out. And then ultimately, it's a series of instructions to pay out money to the certificate of participation owners who are the actual people who are lending the money. So that trust agreement includes, you know, what happens if there's an event of default and the various remedies if there's, if there's an event of default as well. Similarly, you're authorizing the president and the general manager and other officers to sign that document in June after consultation with special counsel and general counsel. So any questions with respect to the trust agreement?
I, I have a question just for, for me to try to understand all this language. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what it means, what it doesn't mean. But on item six, what, what was it necessary for? What's the purpose of item six?
Uh, okay, we can get forward to that. When the district backed in, I think it was two thousand nineteen approving, and this is in connection with the Riffey loan you took out from EPA for the stormwater system. The district adopted a master resolution that governed debt issued by any of its enterprise funds that were in existence at that time. And since that time, the district has issued debt under, you know, under, for stormwater with EPA. It's entered into a line of credit that's available to all of the funds. But, but that document also created, you know, the skeleton or the framework for any of the funds to borrow. There was a typographical error in that resolution in one place where it could have referred to east white water replenishment water system revenues, it referred to west. So that's a correct, that's just correcting a typographical error that was in that master resolution back in two thousand nineteen. So continuing through the document, paragraph three is the approval of the continuing disclosure certificate. If you remember back to the disclosure training that we did with the full board last month, anytime a public agency issues debt in the public credit markets above a certain dollar amount, that agency is required to agree to provide an annual information update to the market that includes both the annual financial statement as well as some updated operating information. So in doc, in item number three, you're approving the form on that continuing disclosure certificate. And therefore, after the closing of the transaction in June, your staff will be obligated each year to file the audited financial statements and certain information related to EFRAC only and make it available to public credit markets. And that's done through an electronic system that we refer to as Emma that's embedded by the regulatory agency. And that obligation will continue as long as any of the EFRAC certificates of participation remain outstanding. So happy to answer any questions? Okay, item number four is the authorization of the debt itself. So, and, and the, the board president asked, will they need a board meeting in June? And the way this is structured, you know, after today, after this resolution is approved, the board has delegated the additional responsibility to the board president and the general manager, but they've done it with certain restrictions in place. So in section four, you're authorizing up to fifty five million dollars of COPs to be executed and delivered. However, that, when that is done, there's certain limitations. Number one, the underwriter, the selected previously as Citigroup, cannot be paid more than point four two five percent of the principal amount. So there's a limit on the underwriting compensation. And then in addition, the all-in true interest cost cannot exceed five percent. So that's an interest rate limitation. And that interest rate limitation is on all of the bonds complying. And then you're limiting the purpose for which the certificate proceeds can be used to the acquisition of capital facilities for EFRAC as described in the installment purchase agreement and to pay the cost of issuance and delivery of the certificates of participation. So you've limited the purposes for which the debt can be issued. So happy to talk about that delegation of authority. Is there any question? Okay, item number five, and, and this is, I think, what was referred to earlier about how we're handling the one percent property tax. In paragraph five, you're approving a depository agreement. This doesn't affect just a bank account, but there's a depository agreement that governs that bank account. And if, once this depository agreement is executed, the district will have instructed Riverside County to direct all discretionary property taxes to this depository account. And then the bond trustee will take the amount of money necessary to pay debt service and segregate that money. And then all of the remaining discretionary property tax will be released back to the district. So this is a mechanism to assure that the one percent property tax doesn't get commingled with other district revenues, number one. And then number two, it's also a mechanism to make sure that the bond trustee has the correct amount of one percent property tax before the one percent property, discretionary one percent property tax is used for the property.
So, so is that?
Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, I mean, is that gonna just go straight to the debt payment from that account? Or is it going to go to the East Rack Fund and then to the debt payment? gonna just go straight to the debt payment from that account, or is it gonna go to the East Rack fund and then to the debt payment?
No, it is.
The way this is set up, it goes directly to the the debt payment.
Well, and this is a big, this is a big part of the assurances we're providing lenders that goes into ratings considerations. I don't want to speak to details, but this improves our credit rating significantly.
It takes the guesswork out of it.
It does, and yet.
It's just gonna go straight into the.
Yeah, and yet it doesn't totally hand tough us either.
Any other questions on the deposit urgent?
Yeah, yes, Doug, hold, one's coming.
What what's, um, what's the process to to increase that? Because it sounds like throughout the life of this, you're gonna have to increase payment. And so is it the? What are you calling it? The authorized officer who somehow communicates this with who? With the county?
Well, yes, the finance department. I don't, may not be here the full thirty years. It will always be in communication with the county to make sure that the proper debt service amount is being included as the the part that gets taken out and put in the it goes through this process before the rest gets sent to the district.
You couldn't, you couldn't. You couldn't as part of this, as part of this. You couldn't as part of this document come up with the schedule that captured all of that for the, for the, for the term of of the debt payment and and so that so that it was already baked in, and if it needed to be undone, it needed the board to undo it. But couldn't you set it up in a way where it's it's just baked in for the, for the, for the life of it unless they got undone? So that you don't have to bring it?
That's the way the documents are scheduled. So within the documents, the district or the depository agreement, there will be a schedule that lays out. Here is how much in debt service is going to be paid over the life of these bonds. So the depository agent will know exactly what needs to be set aside from the discretionary property taxes. So the point that you raised, that is baked into the documents.
Yeah, the other thing I will just add is that at the same time we close the transaction, a letter goes to Riverside County and that letter instructs Riverside County to wire all of that discretionary property tax to the depository account. And that that instruction is a one-time instruction. It doesn't need to be renewed each year. So that that will happen automatically. And as Darren Hodge indicated, the trustee will then have all that money. It has a schedule attached to the deposit agreement with the debt service payment. And the trustee takes out the amount necessary to meet that schedule. And only then releases money back to the, that all happens. The reason for the depository agreement was to sort of enshrine that process for the term of the debt.
So, so, yeah, once that's done, I mean, that that really is, it's it's like a first trust deed. I mean, it's it's taking the first money out. We're not even gonna put our fingers on it. It's gonna go straight to pay the debt. But but my question goes to the rest of the funds. Okay, so every year there's gonna be leftover funds, gonna be fourteen million or whatever is left in that account after they pay the bonds. And that goes to our other funds, you know, some of it may go to Canal, to Domestic, whoever, however we decide that goes. Who controls that remittance of those funds out of this depository account?
So it'll, it'll be to the district finance department who who allocates those funds. We will be following the same process we always have. We'll just be seeing this extra step, which is going to be a very quick step that happens where the trustee takes the amount required.
No, okay, I get it. I guess what I'm asking is who's, who's, who's signing on this account? You know what I'm saying? Do we control this account? I mean, except for this provision that we're agreeing to now, to take that first piece out.
This is our account.
It's our account. Okay, just making sure. I mean, I don't wanna have to fight every year to try to get our funds.
And we're using it through the existing bank, this separate account.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very pleased to hear that this is the way it's being set up. I think it it alleviates a lot of, a lot of my concerns, honestly.
It does mine too, because believe me, from a finance director point of view, you wanna make sure that this is taken care of in the future. No one's gonna drop the ball on.
Yeah, it's gonna be really hard for a board, a rogue board to show up and say, well, we don't like that, so we're gonna do something different. Because you already have this agreement, so I, hey, I'm not sure how that, yeah, it it it's a good protection. Good protection.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, let's keep going.
Okay, item six, we already covered. Item seven, there's an existing interfund loan from drinking water to East White Water, which has a payment schedule. The payment schedule didn't specify whether it gets paid before any other obligation on a parity with any other obligation or subordinate to other obligations. I think this, what it, what would be advisable in terms of getting the highest rating possible on this new C O P debt is for the board of directors to both confirm it will make debt payments on that interfund loan, but to say they'll make those payments subordinate to the public debt service. So section seven just does make that determination, assuming that the board is comfortable with that determination. So any questions on?
This is, this is in reference to the remnant, four million dollars that'll be spread over the following two fiscal years. For the Thomas E. Levy.
Section eight is the board approving U S Bank National Association as the certificate as the trustee for the certificates of participation. And their selection was a result of a process undertaken by the financial, excuse me, the municipal advisors. They are very active as trustees in the municipal bond market. Section nine, authorizing staff in the coming months, if it is cost effective, to solicit bond insurance for the C O Ps. And what bond insurance is, is a, is you can go out and purchase a policy from a third party that guarantees your debt. In return, you give them, you know, you make a one-time upfront payment, a premium in return, because that entity has a hot, may have a higher rating than the district, your debt will have, have the rating of that third party. Whether this makes economic sense or not is going to depend on two things. One, the rating the district actually receives. Given the indication of the rating, it may not be likely that you get insurance, but it's a clock. It also will depend on the market at the time you fail actually to prove in June. So again, we're asking you to authorize your staff to do this, but telling them they can only do it if it turns out to be to make economic sense. So happy to talk about the bond insurer, if there are any questions? Okay, section ten of the resolution, a recent amendment to the government code requires that the district provide a good faith estimate of the cost of the borrowing and make that available to the general public. So included as exhibit E to this resolution is an estimate, estimate of the cost. And those costs are really two categories. One, it's the cost for lawyers and consultants like myself and and Mr. Hodge. But it is also disclosure as to what the total debt service is over the life of the stock. So this is an information item that has to be provided to the public. And so that's the reading for the resolution. Any questions on the good faith process? Okay, and then section eleven is just the catchall. It authorizes your staff and your board president to sign various documents in connection to closing. Any of you who have acquired real property knows that closing is all sorts of, you know, instructions and certifications and notifications that have to be given. So this is a general authorization for your staff and your board president to sign those miscellaneous documents at the closing. So as I said, once the board approves this resolution, this will be the last action it takes other than approving a preliminary official statement at the May board meeting. So you will have delegated authority to your board president and your staff to take these actions subject to the limitations that are set forth in the section. So happy to answer any other questions?
No, it, um, I think you covered it pretty well. Just looking through something else.
Mr. President, I would move, I believe this is correct, resolution twenty twenty one ten.
Yes. I'll, I'll second that motion. Smart to bring this today, guys. And any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favors, please say aye. Aye, and opposed? It has passed in three zero. I know we have one other thing, but before we get into this audio quality, am I the only one that's noticing that our audio quality on the dial is not very good? No, for the dial, I was noticing it with Director Nelson, and I thought maybe he just had a bad connection. But it was the same with these guys. It's the, the garbled, muffled, muddy. It doesn't sound very good. It's not clear crisp, and it's hard to understand what they're saying. And I'm also noticing that his lips weren't moving at the same time as the words were coming out.
Part of it could be their internet connection. I don't believe, I haven't heard any issues from staff as far as the feed. Any complications with that? So it's it's hard to say with, a lot of times it could just be their internet connection. We did notice it with, I believe it was Doug. But as far as we know, we don't have any issues here internally with our system, but we'll continue to monitor.
Well, I don't remember, you know, having that much trouble understanding Director Nelson. He dials in all the time, so. I know we're evaluating this, this system. I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but it, it's hard to understand, and it's important stuff. And if you don't really understand what they're saying, it really makes our job difficult.
We'll see if we can maybe increase the volume as well, see if it.
It wasn't the volume. I mean, I could hear the speaker rattling. It's, it's the clarity.
Okay, we'll look at it. I'll have him look into it.
Sounds like they're speaking from under a really thick blanket.
Or a mask.
Well, they weren't wearing masks. Yeah. So, yeah, maybe a really thick mask, except there wasn't one, whatever. Alright, so we need to recess this board as, as our C B W D Board of Directors and reconvene as the, or convene as the Public Facilities Corporation to take up item nine F.
Before we convene, Jeff, and I know you gave us a brief description of the Public Facilities Corporation. But, yeah, you said it hadn't been activated since like ninety seven or something like that.
Correct.
Was, I think you said that was the first time that was, that it was created.
It was created in nineteen ninety one.
Okay. So, as you said all that, I still didn't really quite understand why it needed to be created in the first place, or really what its function is, separate from the board, and why we would why, why do we need an extra board?
Yeah, that's why we've got these guys here.
So that's my question.
Yeah, Doug, do you wanna take that one?
Sure, yeah, the, the district, like most other special districts, most other water agencies have a variety of ways it can incur indebtedness. It can issue general obligation bonds with a paid by property. It can issue revenue bonds with a secured by all its revenues. But I, I think those are not typically used by water agencies anymore for a variety of reasons. For a project like this, which is secured by only a portion of the district's revenues, the way most water agencies, I mean entities today, is either by creating a joint powers agency through which the debt is issued, or to issue, to create a financing corporation through which the debt is issued. And the, the district, like again, most water agencies in California has this financing corporation, which was set up in the past to facilitate the issuance of debt for projects like this. And then as a result, I think staff's decision was it made more sense to use this financing corporation rather than set up a brand new J P A just to finance a project.
Thank you.
The reason for the finance corporation.
Thank you, it makes sense, thank you.
So the, the, you as the board of the finance corporation and are being asked to approve the resolution as well, and that is simply to authorize your corporation board president and staff to execute, generally speaking, the same documents that you've already, that you withdrew previously of the board of the district. So you're being, you are authorizing the same amount of debt to be issued for the same purposes. And then you are also authorizing the installment purchase agreement and the trust agreement, which we described in the district meeting. There's really only one new document that's being approved here, and that's the assignment agreement. And what the assignment agreement does is it, the financing corporation is going to assign its right to receive payments directly to the C O P trustee for U S Bank. And this allows the district to make its payments directly to the trustee rather than making them to the corporation and then having the corporation make the payments to the trustee. Bond investors like that because, you know, the payments are going direct. And generally speaking, the accounting is much simpler if the payments go direct, and you're not having to do back to back transactions. So that's the purpose of the assignment agreement. The resolution also includes a good faith cost estimate that's the same as the good faith cost estimate that was attached to the district resolution. And it's also authorizing in section four, the corporation officers to sign documents of closing. So happy to answer any other questions?
Okay, so.
So, so Doug, are, are you requesting the approval of each of these four items separately, or?
No, the, the resolution, by approving the resolution, you're proving, the board would be approving the various agreements.
There are incentives to the resolution.
Mr. President, I would move the resolutions on behalf of the Public Facilities Corporation.
Now, second.
So we do have a motion, a second, and with hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed? It has passed three oh. At this time, we adjourn the, as the Public Facilities Corporation and reconvene as the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Doug and Darren.
Uh, welcome back. Do we have Director Nelson on the line? No? No, he was awake.
Yeah, apologies, I thought that would take less time, otherwise I would have put it at the end of this closed session.
Well, while we're waiting for Director Nelson, why don't we get started? We have board member General Commons, um, work away. He's joining now? Okay, we'll work our way across the dice, Director Aguilar.
I'm back here.
Thank you.
Uh, no comments?
All right.
Yes, I, I do have some comments, and I did want to thank staff, Katie, and engineering, and, uh, for, on a short notice, putting together, um, a request to the congressman for some earmarking of some funding that's needed to complete the Avenue sixty-six water transmission mainline. Um, we've been working with them for, for some time now. And I think, I'm hearing some background noise. So, well, we, I think we, we've known about this project for a while. We, we understand that it's a, you know, what we're calling necessary backbone infrastructure that's needed in the region to not only consolidate small water systems in the region, but also provide the supply, the reliability that's needed for perhaps Mecca, North Shore. We know that with some of the issues that are out there related to water quality concerns, housing concerns, that there's a push, I think, from the greater community to try to build more affordable housing. And in our participation, those conversations with those different entities, you know, as the water purveyor in the region and kind of the water expert in the region, what we've conveyed to them is that it's really hard to, you know, it's really hard to create any project, yet alone affordable housing projects, without a tremendous amount of infrastructure. Um, and I think this is something that's, that, um, folks are beginning to understand. The more we talk about it, the more we point to this project, I think the more, the more buy-in is created. And so, uh, in our effort to try to put together this request for the congressman to try to earmark some of these funds, uh, we were also asked to, uh, receive, or to try to get letters of support. And, um, I'm very happy to announce that, given the short notice, we were able to generate a, a large number of letters of support from different folks, uh, representing nonprofits, representing healthcare providers like, uh, the Borrego Health, uh, Clinica de Salud, a lot of the other local jurisdictions. And so not only do I want to thank staff for helping frame the project from a technical standpoint, but also thank the number of folks that were able to provide us a letter of support. And, you know, it's a long list. Um, I think I, I, it's not very long, but it is long, and I just want to read their names. Um, it won't take long. But, um, you know, these are folks like Alianza, who we've been working on at the back task force for, from the very beginning. Assemblymember Garcia's office gave us a letter, Borrego Health, the City of Coachella, Clinicas de Salud, uh, the Coachella Valley Unified School District, Culturas Music and Arts, the Desert Recreation District, the Galilee Center, Leadership Council, Lift to Rise, Pueblo Unido, the Salt Sea Authority, Supervisor, Supervisor's Office, Toadec and United Way. And so I, I, I think we did, uh, a great thing here. Uh, I think it shows that that there's a number of folks that support this project, and, you know, we're hopeful that, um, something positive is going to come out of, out of it. Um, I think what I'm hearing, and, and I'm happy to hear this, is that it, it, it's not only, you know, we're not just teeing it up perhaps for this funding source, but as we perhaps need to chase other federal funding, it's already created kind of the foundation for the argument that this is a very critical piece of infrastructure that we need to put in the Eastern Coachella Valley for a lot of reasons. And so I just wanted to thank folks for, for their involvement, and, um, those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I don't have any comments. Uh, Director Nelson, any board member comments?
No, sir, I don't have any comments.
Okay, good. All right, let's try to get through these meetings then. Um, we had the, uh, tours with Director Aguilar, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, um, I wanted to thank Dan and, and Mike Rios and others who, um, who helped me with my final tour. Uh, particularly, I was, uh, very interested in looking at replenishment facilities, and it was very helpful. Again, impressed by the quality of the staff and their strong desire to serve our customers.
Thank you. We had the Gulf and Water Task Force Zoom on the twenty-fourth. I was on there, um, talked a fair amount about COVID. I, there were also some discussions about some comments made at the Joint Water Policy Advisory Committee meeting that happened a couple days earlier, that, um, uh, I, I'm not going to say what they said, but, um, the Gulf was a little concerned about it, and, uh, I had to leave the meeting about half an hour in, so that was, that for me, I don't know if anyone else was on that call. Nope. All right, Salt and Sea Authority on the twenty-fifth, Director Strada.
Yeah, a general, general meeting, I, 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 I thought I had reported on this already, but, um, maybe I didn't, uh, just a general update on progress and reports from the various federal agencies, state agencies. Uh, I was hoping to get a report or a presentation regarding the Q S A J P A. There has been a request at the Salt Sea Authority to get an understanding of what that J P A is, why it was formed, what, you know, what the expenditure plans are, what projects it, it can, you know, um, sponsor. And I think it's, it's really come out of the, perhaps the ask of, um, Imperial County, uh, to try to add membership to the Q S A. And, um, the Salt Sea Authority kind of wishes to understand, you know, what the J P A is, to try to weigh in on any involvement. So that was postponed, and it, it's going to come back at the next meeting, so that's probably a good thing to, to watch if, if you have time for, for that. And that was it.
Good. Uh, March twenty-fifth, we have a.
Yeah, I don't know if, yeah, Director Bianca, I don't know if you were there. No?
March twenty-fifth, board study session is noted. Um, March twenty-ninth, C V link groundbreaking celebration, Director Nelson.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
He said we can hear him okay.
Hey, John, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you. I couldn't understand what you said, but I heard you.
C VAG held a groundbreaking, uh, for the C V link, uh, just east of Jefferson and north of Highway one eleven, which is the La Quinta Indio hub area. Um, it was attended by Indio and Coachella and, uh, council members and Riverside, uh, Supervisor Perez was there, as well as the Chair of the, um, Supervisor's, um, Board. So it was, uh, well-attended, and I represented C V W D there.
Thank you. Uh, we had a March thirtieth meeting with, uh, staff, uh, Director Aguilar and myself, regarding, um, some projects in the desert hot springs area. You'll go, go into any detail on that, Director Aguilar?
I, I just, um, I would just add that we, we did discuss the requests from the city to try to work with them on some service issues at, uh, Palm and Dillon. And I think, uh, we came up with a potentially good solution. Uh, staff helped craft an email to the mayor. Uh, we sent it, and he responded and said he, he thought that we could work something out, so it was positive.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you for doing that. Uh, March thirty-first, Colorado River Board Tribal Involvement Meeting, Director Nelson.
Yes, uh, Director Powell, I have, um, I'll, I'll report on the next three meetings, since they're all pretty much intertwined. Uh, the March thirty-first meeting, uh, with the C R B staff, the April first meeting with the, uh, seven states, uh, principals, and then the April second meeting, uh, with, uh, representatives, uh, from the tribe. So, um, uh, all interrelated, uh, as you know, the twenty, twenty-six, uh, guideline renegotiations are, um, have kicked off. Uh, we've written our letter, uh, the states have written the letter to, um, indicate that we're already, uh, discussing, uh, issues, um, amongst ourselves, and that we request the Secretary of the Interior to, um, uh, to work with us, uh, in that regard. Uh, this year, this renegotiation will have a, uh, much greater tribal, uh, involvement in it. Um, there'll be a N G O component, and so these, uh, series of meetings, uh, were related to that tribal involvement meeting, uh, which happened on the second. And, uh, we had seven basin states principals, uh, Jean Chaukrau, um, Jocky, John Isner, John DiAntonio, myself, Pat Charo, Becky Mitchell, um, along with, uh, the Assistant Secretary of Water and Science, Tanya Trujillo, um, Bob Snow, uh, Solicitor, uh, Camino, um, as the Assistant Deputy Commissioner of the Reclamation, along with, um, uh, six, uh, tribal chair people from, and presidents of their respective tribes. Uh, we were missing some California tribes, the Port Mojave, uh, that, um, I'm hanging up butcherous, um, the, uh, I'm not even going to say it. So, uh, so anyway, uh, we had, uh, the Colorado River Indian Tribe Chairwoman Flores, um, President Ebranete Benitez, Governor Lewis, um, President, uh, Nurse from the Nahah, uh, Navajos, um, Chairman, uh, Park from the ten tribes committee with the Mountain Utes, um, um, Mr. Hill from the, uh, I've had some, but we, we, we're kicking off this as a, as a kind of a, as an introduction, laying some issues out on the table, what the renegotiations are and are not. Um, and so it was, uh, it was a fruitful meeting, um, and we, um, were glad to have participated.
Okay, thank you. See growers meeting, um, on the fifth. Directors Powell and Estrada, are you on there? Yes. The fifth. Do I have notes? Yes, I do. I have notes.
Good.
I can read it off if you want.
Go for it.
Let's see, Jim reviewed rate increase to eighteen notices. We got a status update on Oasis project, and then, uh, the Laquia extension. Oasis Mobile Home Park, Colorado River Water Underrun, and moving that, the approval agreement water to white water. Um, generally, there are twelve or thirteen participants. I think that covers it.
Yep.
Let's see, we had a, April sixth Cathedral City meeting, Directors Aguilar and Estrada. Oh, that must have been fun to go back there. Oh, you didn't go though, probably?
No, it was, no, it was all done, done by Zoom, but it was great to see my former colleagues. Yeah, we met with, um, Director Strada, of course, Estrada and I met with, uh, the city manager, um, uh, former mayor and now Councilman Carnavale, and Vice Mayor, um,
Gutierrez.
Gutierrez, thank you. I'm going to pay for that, I'm sure, for, for his name, but, um, anyway, we, we had a good discussion, several topics, uh, new developments. Jim did an excellent job in talking about the, sort of the scope of, uh, services in, in the city and, and conservation, of which, uh, they all found quite interesting and made a comment on, about, about that. Uh, we talked about development north of ten, uh, forming assessment districts in certain areas still on sewer, and spent a fair amount of time talking about issues on homelessness in the wash areas, and trying to help them maybe clear some vegetation in, in some of the areas where the camps are, are currently being, uh, oh.
Yeah?
No.
Good. Uh, then we show a board study session on the eighth. We had a C VAG E and E committee on the eighth.
I was, I was not at the E and E meeting, I was at the, uh, Conservation Commission meeting.
There you go.
Um, we had, uh, required twelve parcels from the default list, approximately a hundred and seven acres. And, um, they're still working on the Bighorn sheep fencing.
Thank you. And then we did have a D V B A meeting on, uh, eighth. It's interesting to hear what's going on out there. Um, there was one project that, and I actually did a little follow-up afterwards, because I was curious, but that, that it's a year and a half, if you want to get a, a new home, there, there's, there're, partly it's because the market is getting, they're sold out. They're building as fast as they can. But partly, I found out, it's because they're having trouble finding qualified plumbers and electricians. If you have any friends that are plumbers or electricians.
I don't think we have any of those here.
It was a different kind of plumbing, though. But, you know, so, uh, anyways, we approved our budget, the, the inventory of homes for sale is extremely low, high demand, and they're doing a blood drive. So that's that. Uh, are there other meetings we need to report on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two additional meetings.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the first, the first one, uh, is on April ninth. Um, I met with the Water Education Foundation on their Colorado River tour, which starts in Las Vegas and goes, uh, at Hoover Dam and goes down the river, speaking with different water agencies and Colorado River water users. Um, they stopped, um, at the Salt and Sea as well, and talked with, uh, Executive Director Patrick O'Dowd, um, and then they visited with me on, uh, the ninth, uh, regarding Coachella Valley Water District issues, uh, and how we're managing our supplies. Um, in about two weeks, they'll have all that put together, and, um, with their, um, attendees on their tour, we'll have a live Zoom session, and after we do the interview, uh, by video, then we'll be available to answer questions. So that's coming up. And then on April twelfth, I attended, uh, the Western USA Hydrology Assessment Webinar, put on by Bureau of Reclamation in twenty twenty-one, um, um, in accordance with the twenty twenty-one Secure Water Act, uh, they're required to report, uh, every five years. The last report they did was in twenty sixteen. Uh, the effort kicked off in twenty twenty. Uh, it's a hydrology G assessment on eight basins across the United States, and, um, Colorado River being one of. and um Colorado River being one of them. Sacramento, San Joaquin are lumped together for one report. Uh, those are the other two that are pertinent to us. They also do the Columbia, the Missouri and several others. Uh, and they were uh having this webinar to go through the executive um uh re- review report. Uh, and uh it's mainly focused about how the Bureau of Reclamation can put all of the data together that it collects to have a working model to um model uh scenarios uh with uh climate change in mind. So it's a, it's a full climate change report. Uh, very interesting and there's a web portal available that users can manipulate the data and uh look at uh uh what happens if, say for example, our current uh drought in both California and the Colorado River Basin, what, what those will do and, and what kinds of water would be available under those conditions. So it's pretty interesting.
Thank you. All right, I think. Castle, I think you had something.
Yes, I had a, a meeting on March twentieth that I didn't report on. And uh, I uh, I kind of tried to host a, a group from, I, I think you might call it the Elland Empire, um, but they're called the Center for Community Action, Environmental Justice, and they they were doing maybe their kind of yearly meeting with their board of, their, their kind of board of directors for that nonprofit. And so they decided to do it out here in the Eastern Coachella Valley. And so um, they had their meeting at a restaurant and did some work. And then um, I took them out on a, on a tour on the east side and uh took them to Oasis, took them to the top of Fox, Fox Canyon where you could see the, the canal, took them to um Mountain View Estates and give them a sense of what that project was about. And so that's what we talked about. And then on April eighth, uh, we had our uh Safer Advisory Group meeting, um, which is really, it's really parsed out into two meetings. Um, this is considered our first meeting, but it's the first time that we kind of split it into two meetings. So the, the April eighth was the first meeting. And what we did was go over um, what was going to be released, I think the day after that, which was April ninth, but it's the needs assessment. And then, so the first meeting, we had the water board kind of give us a review of the needs assessment before they put it out to the public on the ninth. And then we're supposed to try to review the needs assessment and try to come up with uh suggestions, comments on the second meeting, which is scheduled for, I believe, the twenty-second. And so um that needs assessment um is out. Um, and just for some background, uh Director Aguilar, um, there was a bill, SB two hundred, which created the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund. And it was a, a bill that um took on a lot of different forms for about two, three years and at the state proposing different ways to create this fund. The, the, the end goal was to create a fund to try, to really try to put more teeth to this uh human right to water. So California created this human right to water thing, but didn't really have any any funding behind it, maybe let's say perhaps, or maybe teeth. So they would, the, the purpose was to try to create more funding for it. Um, and it took on a lot of different versions. Ultimately, it passed as SB two hundred. As part of that, um, the water board at the state level was directed to create an advisory group and consult with the advisory group to try to come up with priorities, uh funding priorities, needs assessments, and really create an expenditure plan as to how these monies were to be used throughout the state and for what purposes for the next ten years. So each, each year, there's a hundred and thirty million dollars that's appropriated and then that gets used um across the state based on these priorities. So this needs assessment is, is part of that effort. Um, and so I, I know staff, you know, you, you, you follow that very closely. We're very involved. So if you could um review that in preparation perhaps for the second meeting where we might have to provide some comments that'd be appreciated. Um, and uh, that's it. Those were my two meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, is there a motion approved per DM for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, and uh roll call vote please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Passed by though. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. Just three items this morning. Uh, go quickly, uh recap of where we are on our COVID nineteen stats. We've had eighty-eight recovered positive cases. Unfortunately, two mortalities, Nelson McCarthy and Chris Kaiser, and I think Dan Charlton will speak a little bit about that. Uh, Chris uh later. Uh, we've got zero positive uh currently. We've got zero direct contact situations, zero indirect contact and zero folks off work due to COVID-related situations. So um, that, that's the good news. Uh, where we are um with vaccinations, we put out a quick survey the other day. We didn't get uh a lot of responses. Uh, we got about thirty-three percent of the staff, a hundred and seventy-nine out of about five hundred and forty-six. So of that uh response, it looks like raw numbers, um, about a hundred and twenty-seven folks have already been vaccinated or plan or are partially vaccinated. So that's about twenty-three percent of our total staffing. Uh, about four percent uh said they were not planning to be vaccinated. And I suspect that number is actually higher because if you were planning on being vaccinated, you probably wouldn't have even opened the survey. So uh, we'll continue to work on that. Um, you know, again, it's a little unfortunate that we don't have a better response on the survey. Uh, but encouraging to know that the biggest number of those responding have either been fully vaccinated, uh seventy-two out of five hundred and forty-six are fully vaccinated and fifty-five are partially vaccinated. So a hundred and twenty-seven overall. Uh, we are planning to do uh vaccination here uh tomorrow. Um, between ten and three, we've opened that up to employees and their immediate household members and to retirees and their immediate household members. Uh, we've asked uh that they try and pre-register, uh but we're not requiring that. We'll have enough uh vaccines for about five hundred doses, which I think is way more than we'll actually have show up. I think the last, yesterday when I checked with HR, we had about fifty people that were pre-registered and because of that, we decided to open it up for retirees and their immediate family members. So again, if uh, if this goes well, we'll increase our numbers. Um, a little disappointed that it, the turnout hasn't been better. I do appreciate Director Bianco's efforts on our behalf. Uh, it's because of his contacts that we were able to find an individual to come and do it here. Uh, unfortunately, we're only able to do it here in Palm Desert and not both Palm Desert and um Coachella, but we are uh asking our department heads to make uh time available for staff to come get dosed. Um, and I, one, the last thing I have to do is introduce a new staff member who's attending his first board meeting today and I have to congratulate him on his sustainability and longevity uh actually sitting through so far. And that's Elmer Alex, who is uh our new Assistant Director of Engineering. Uh, he'll be focusing mostly on planning and uh development. Uh, and so he'll be helping carry out there. Uh, he comes from most recently the city of Vista and prior to that, the city of San Diego. So we know he's got a good background. And that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Council, Council Report.
Prior to the pandemic, of course, the only opportunity uh for the board to have a teleconference meeting uh was if on the agenda, each teleconference location was posted accessible to the public with a notice of the, with the uh, uh, actual posting of the agenda. Um, during the pandemic, of course, it'd been over a year using Zoom, Zoom or other virtual um options. Uh, there are three bills currently pending and they're not close to being passed, so this isn't going to happen tomorrow that will address what will happen when we come out of the pandemic uh to realize the fact that going back to having public accessible to your house or to your hotel or wherever is, is out of date and probably not safe. So with that, there are three bills pending. One is optional, which would allow a board to have virtual meetings all the time or from or on op, you know, on certain times if you wish to have those. And it would not require the posting for the board members to attend with an agenda and open to the public at their residence or wherever they may be. The second bill would only allow Zoom virtual meetings if there's a declaration of an emergency and during that emergency. The third, and let me give you the bill number just in case, AB seven oh three is the completely optional version. AB three sixty-one is only during an emergency. And then AB three three nine would mandate virtual meetings going forward and would require that the board provide virtual access even if all the board members are in attendance. It would include uh new requirements uh for uh the providing of closed captioning on text for those who cannot hear audio, as well as a number of, of requirements in terms of live translation services and things of that nature. Obviously, uh that would come with a cost to local governments. But I just wanted to mention that, that after the pandemic is over, there is a push to have some level of virtual meetings going forward without going back to what was a very restrictive process prior. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, any department? Oh, Dan Charlton, yes. Come on up.
Uh, good morning, Board. I'd like to take a moment to honor Chris Geiser, Electric Shop Supervisor. Chris started working in, at CBWD in February two thousand and two. Uh, on March twelfth, Chris passed away due to complications with COVID nineteen. Uh, though Chris had been battling with cancer for the past year. Uh, Chris began his career uh at CBWD as a meter reader trainee in February two thousand and two and moved to the Electric Shop in March of two thousand and four. Uh, he continued to work extremely hard and was promoted through the ranks to Assistant Supervisor of the Electric Shop in two thousand and thirteen. In July seventeen, Chris was promoted to Supervisor of the Electric Shop.
In July, in July twenty seventeen, Chris was promoted to the Supervisor of the Electric Shop and became a very strong leader. Chris was a testament that hard work paid off. He loved CBWD and his team. Even during his health struggles over the past year, he continued to stay engaged with the Electric Shop. Chris was very inquisitive and he always had a question that needed answering. He loved to smile and was always positive. Chris will be missed dearly. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Lindsay, his wife, and the entire Geiser, Geiser family. So please keep him in your thoughts when you have the opportunity. Uh, and I think that's all we've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, okay, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to address the items on the agenda and we will reconvene here uh reopen in open session to report out. Yes, uh, regular meetings hereby reconvene. We do not have any reportable action from closed session and hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.